This meeting will please come to order. Will the clerk please read the call of the meeting and the return of service?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Duxbury Town Meeting, warrant. Saturday, March nine, two thousand nineteen, at nine a.m., Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, seventy-three Alden Street. Plymouth S.S., greetings to either of the constables of the Town of Duxbury in said county. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet at the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, seventy-three Alden Street, in said Duxbury, on Saturday, the ninth day of March, two thousand nineteen, next, at nine o'clock in the forenoon for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as prescribed by Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten, and by Chapter two, Section two point three of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, seven days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting. Given under our hands this eleventh day of February, two thousand nineteen, Board of Selectmen, Theodore J. Flynn Chair, Sean Dowell Vice Chair, David J. Madigan Clerk. Plymouth S.S., twenty February, two thousand nineteen. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury herein described to meet at the time and place and for the purposes as described by the bylaws of the town. A true copy attested. Mitchell LeBret, Constable of Duxbury.
Thank you. Unless there's some objection, we'll dispense with the reading of the warrant. I ask you to please stand for the presentation of colors by the honor guards of the Duxbury Police and Fire Departments. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me introduce the people you see facing you at the front of the auditorium. They are on your right, the Honorable Ted Flynn, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the Honorable Sean Dowell Vice Chair, and the Honorable David Madigan Clerk. Members of the Board of Selectmen seated with them are our Town Manager, Annie Reed, and Director of Finance, John Adams. Here on the stage with me is our Town Clerk, Susan Kelly, Assistant Town Clerk, Linda Savadi, and Town Council, Jeffrey Blake. In the front, on your left, are seated the members of the Finance Committee. They are Betsy Sullivan Chair, Frank Mangione, Shannon Garden, Ferdinand Gittart, Nathan Taylor, Kathleen Glynn, Jerry Pizzani, Peter Sullivan, and Ed Venna. My name is John Tuffey, and I'm the Town Moderator. The hall today is divided into six voting sections numbered as follows. Section one is the small section on the main floor in the front to my left. Section two is the center section in the front. Section three is the small section in the front to my right. Section four is the section of the balcony in the rear to my left. Section five is the center section of the balcony, and section six is the section of the balcony to my right. Visitors will be seated in the far rear of the balcony to my left in the last few rows behind section four, which are marked for non-voters. Please note that if a hand count's taken, tellers will not be counting voters who are seated in the non-voting section. Microphones for your use are located in the back of the hall behind the center balcony, section five, at the foot of each of the balcony aisles where they meet the stairs down to the main floor, behind voting sections one and three, on the main floor, and here in front between the Selectmen and Finance Committee tables. Former moderator Friend Wyler has been sworn in as Assistant Moderator and will assist as necessary. Assistive listening devices are available on the table next to the entrance to the main floor, right behind section one. They are provided by the Municipal Commission on Disabilities. The fire chief has requested that I point out the fire exits from this room. There are two fire exits on the lower level of the auditorium, one to my immediate right, your left, and one to my left when you entered the room. There are also two fire exits on the upper level of the room at the rear of the hall behind the balconies. Please do not block these exits by standing or placing anything such as chairs in front of them. The seating capacity of the room is a thousand thirty; that capacity will be enforced. The fire chief has also requested that you not sit in the aisles or on the stairs between the balcony and the main floor. I request that all cell phones be turned off while the meeting is in session except for public safety officials, and for your information, this meeting is being taped. Depending upon your wishes, I suggest that today's meeting run until twelve noon, that we break for lunch and reconvene at one p.m. and go around to five p.m., then recess to Monday at seven thirty if necessary. If additional sessions become necessary, I will recommend that we recess to Tuesday and finally Wednesday if it actually comes to that. I would like to review with you certain town meeting procedures. Upon checking in, registered voters were issued a handheld voting device, the little white card. This device is different from the device that was used in the past, but it works in the same basic way. When the voting device entitles you to be seated in the voting section, if you have an issue with your voting device, please go to the teller's desk, which is in the hallway immediately outside the main entrance to the room, and they will issue you a new one. Any voter who is unable to use the voting device is asked to stay in the reserved section and will be assisted during voting. Their votes will be handed to the moderator to be included in the vote total. The voting process will be as follows. After debate is over, the moderator will call for a vote. A light will go on on the cube on the stage to my left, that white box. Voters will have twenty seconds to vote. When the moderator announces, "Please vote," it will turn green. When the twenty seconds have passed, the moderator will announce that the vote is closed, and the light will turn red. To use the handheld device, press one for yes, two for no. If you wish to change your vote, just press the appropriate button, and it will correct it. There's a screen on the handheld device to indicate what you have voted, and the green light on your device will indicate that your vote has been registered. If the handheld voting system fails, we will then go to a voice vote or a hand count. If a hand count becomes necessary, the voting device must be held up when the vote is counted. The tellers have been instructed to count only votes cast by persons who are holding a voting device in their hands and who are seated in the voting sections. To ensure accuracy, all votes will be counted by two tellers. This may require some additional time and request your cooperation in the process. Excuse me. As you all have been notified this morning, we will shortly be holding a special town meeting within the annual town meeting. This was called by the Selectmen to deal with certain issues which require our immediate attention or which arose too late to be included in the warrant for the annual town meeting. The warrant for the special town meeting is the white handout which is captioned, "Special Town Meeting Warrant, Saturday, March ninth, two thousand nineteen." Copies are available on the table in the hall just outside the main entrance to this room. The procedure will be as followed. Upon completion of the preliminary announcements, I will entertain a motion to recess the annual town meeting until the adjournment of the special town meeting which was called for today. We will then convene the special town meeting. Upon completion of the business of the special town meeting and upon its adjournment, we will automatically reconvene the annual town meeting where we left off at Article One. At this point in the town meeting, we customarily vote to give permission to speak to town employees and officials who are not registered voters in the Town of Duxbury. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to allow our town employees and officials to speak should the occasion arise. Mrs. Sullivan, may I have a motion? And a second? A motion's been made and seconded to permit town employees and officials to address the meeting. It's a majority vote and an opportunity to try our electronic voting. So if you're in favor of it, please press one. If you're opposed, please press two. Voting is closed, and the motion passes ninety-eight to four. This meeting is, unless I hear some objection, I will treat this vote as your permission for these people to speak at the annual town, at the special town meeting if the occasion arises. This meeting is governed by the statute of our town bylaws and town meeting times. In addition, I suggest that we abide by the following procedures so that we may conduct the business of the meeting in an orderly fashion. After I have announced that we are considering an article, the article will be moved by the Finance Committee, and the recommendation will be heard. I will then give the proposer of the article the opportunity of making his or her opening remarks. In those cases where there is an organized or recognized opposition to an article, which has been identified to me, I will then give the opponent of the article the opportunity of making his or her opening remarks. Upon completion of these remarks, the matter will be open for general debate. If you wish to speak, I request that you go to one of the microphones after you have been recognized by me. Would you please identify yourself by name and address? I request that all speakers limit their remarks to a maximum of five minutes, and ask that speakers do not attempt to be recognized for a second time on the discussion of any article until every other person who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so for the first time. Stages are designed to allow audiences to hear people on the stage and not for people on the stage to hear the audience. There may be times when you need to speak up to get my attention. Any lengthy or complicated motions or amendments should be submitted in writing so that we will know precisely what is being voted upon and so that we can maintain an accurate record of the proceeding. Town Council is available to assist if you have any questions about drafting of such Two parliamentary issues I want to mention before we move on. The first is procedures for a motion for the previous question. As I suppose many of you are aware, a motion for the previous question is a move to end debate. It takes a two-thirds vote. It is a useful motion at town meetings, but there are some concerns that it may be abused if not used or used unfairly. To that end, we will have two special procedures that we will follow. I will not accept a motion to remove the previous question from someone who has just finished speaking on an article. This eliminates motion for the previous question as a vehicle to get into the last word. Second procedure that's being followed is intended to assure that both proponents and opponents of an article will have an opportunity to speak before debate is ended. As I previously announced, the order of speakers that I will recognize on an article, Finance Committee motion, a report of the Finance Committee, remarks by the proponent, and any organized or recognized opposition. After those opening remarks and after hearing the reports of opening remarks, the article will then be open for general discussion, and until the article is open for general discussion, I will not accept a motion for the previous question. This procedure will hopefully assure that both sides at least have an opportunity to make their initial remarks. The format may also help frame the issues of the debate. Reconsideration. At the last annual town meeting, we voted to change the town bylaw that allows for reconsideration. As in the past, a motion to reconsider requires that the same quantitative vote as the original motion for it to pass. Second, it must be made at the same session as the original motion or the next succeeding session, and it may only be used once. The change that was made last year is that a motion to reconsider may only be considered if the proponent provides, in the opinion of the moderator, factual information that was not available during the session when the original vote was taken. I will now entertain a motion to recess this annual town meeting until the adjournment of the special town meeting which was called for in this debate. All those in favor, please press one. We're going to ask, sit. Okay. We're going to ask that people vote again on this. Voting is now open, one for yes, two for no. Voting is now closed, and it passes a hundred and twenty-one to four. The special town meeting, which was called for Saturday, March ninth, two thousand nineteen, at nine-ten at this place, will now come to order. Will the clerk read the call for the special town meeting and return of service?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Duxbury, Special Town Meeting Warrant. Saturday, March nine, two thousand nineteen, at nine-ten a.m., Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, seventy-three Alden Street. Plymouth S.S., greetings to either of the constables of the Town of Duxbury in said county. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet in the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, seventy-three Alden Street, in said Duxbury, on Saturday, the ninth day of March, two thousand nineteen, next, at nine-ten a.m. for a special town meeting for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said meeting. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as prescribed by Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten, and by Chapter two, Section two point three of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, and by publishing a copy of this warrant in a Plymouth County newspaper as prescribed by Article two, Section two point three of the Duxbury bylaws, at least fourteen days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting. Given under our hands this eleventh day of February, two thousand nineteen, Board of Selectmen, Theodore J. Flynn Chair, Sean Dowell Vice Chair, and David J. Madigan Clerk. Plymouth S.S., twenty February, two thousand nineteen. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Duxbury herein described to meet at the time and place and for the purposes as described by the bylaws of the town. A true copy attested. Mitchell LeBret, Constable of Duxbury.
And now for the business of the special town meeting. Mrs. Sullivan, may we now have a motion under Article one for the special town meeting?
One hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars by transfer from available funds to supplement appropriations previously voted under Article five of the annual town meeting of March tenth, two thousand eighteen, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand eighteen, for line items in the budgets of various town departments as follows. Item one, Fire Department General Expenses. Budget was three hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Adjustment, fourteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight. Revised FY nineteen budget would be three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Funding source, free cash. Line two, DPW Vehicle Maintenance General Expenses. The budget was a hundred and forty-nine thousand. The adjustment is twenty-five thousand. Revised budget is one hundred and seventy-four thousand, with the funding source twenty thousand from four eighteen DPW Fuel Depot General Expenses, five thousand from line four ninety-one Cemetery General Expenses. Line three, Harbor Master Salaries. Budget was two hundred and eighty-three thousand, one ninety-four. Adjustment, thirty-nine thousand. Revised FY nineteen budget, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. The funding source, free cash. Line four, Harbor Master General Expenses. Budget, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Adjustment, fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Revised FY nineteen budget, sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Funding source, free cash. Line five, Harbor Master General Expenses. Budget, sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Adjustment, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Revised FY nineteen budget, ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Funding source, Waterways Improvement Fund.
Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press one. Voting's closed, motion passes a hundred and ten to twenty-one. Article number two.
Article two, I move that the town appropriate the sum of ten thousand and nine dollars and eleven cents to pay the following unpaid bills of previous fiscal years, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sums as follows. Line one, Associated Elevator Facilities Department, one thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Funding source, general expenses. Line two, Eversource DPW Central Buildings, eleven dollars and thirty-three cents. Funding source, general expenses. Three, Lowe's Facilities Department. Amount, fourteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Funding source, general expenses. Four, Garrity and Nicely, I apologize if I'm pronouncing that wrong. Legal. Amount, four thousand and fifty dollars. Funding source, general expenses. Five, Quest Diagnostics Human Resources, fifty-three dollars and thirty cents. Funding source, general expenses. Six, Clipper Press Department Planning, eighty dollars. Funding source, general expenses. Line seven, Hunter Systems Police Department. Amount, four thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Funding source, general expenses. Number eight, Calari Automotive, Inc. DPW Vehicle Maintenance, one hundred and twenty dollars. Funding source, general expenses. And finally, number nine, Matthews International. The Cemetery Department, nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Funding source, general expenses.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Since this is a case of paying bills from a previous fiscal year, it requires a nine-tenth vote for it to pass. So, voting is now open. All those in favor, please press one. Voting is closed, and the motion passes a hundred and twenty-two to eleven. Article number three, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article three, Funding of the Weed Harvester. I move that the town appropriate the sum of of forty-two thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing an aquatic weed harvesting machine, and to meet said appropriation, transfer forty-two thousand from free cash. Such funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager, and to authorize the town manager to accept any gifts or grants for such project.
Second.
Finance Committee voted to support this article. The, it should be noted that the, there is a thirty-five thousand dollar grant. The harvester costs seventy-seven thousand, and this is the town's portion of, of that purchase to replace a piece of equipment that has outlived its useful life.
Any further discussion? We have a question. Sir, in the back?
Chastain Street, this one and a couple other articles look like they're capital items, and I'm wondering why they're not in the regular warrant, instead of the special meeting.
Mr. Adams, Finance Director, I think has an answer for you.
Good morning. We already received the check from the federal, or from the state legislature, the thirty-five thousand matching portion, which the funds have to be spent by June thirtieth. So therefore, even though the capital outlay, they did vote on this, we moved it to the special so that we would be able to spend those funds to be compliant.
If you'll, please go to the microphone. And part of the, part of the reason for requesting that people go to the microphone is, is so that people in the room can hear, and equally as important, anybody who wishes to listen to the tape or is watching this at home can't hear people when they talk out loud, as opposed to talk into the, into a microphone.
To Ann Kingsley, Lake Shore Drive, this harvester does not work on all the ponds. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm so sorry, I didn't understand.
It's not use, useful on all of the ponds in the town. It's only for certain ponds. Some of them are not able to use this harvester.
I see Mr. Grady coming to the front of the room. I, I suspect he's got some information for you.
This machine is only used in the Island Creek Pond on Toby Garden Street. The pond on Lake Shore Drive is treated with a herbicide, will be actually treated this spring. That was funded last year at town meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to make clarification of when we're voting for something that's not for everyone, it's just only for certain areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'm gonna call for a vote. Voting is on. All those in favor, Motion passes one hundred and ten to twenty-one. Article number four, Mrs. Sullivan.
Funding of Engineering and Design Work Related to the Powder Point Bridge. I move that the town appropriate eighty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of obtaining engineering and design services for repairs to the Powder Point Bridge, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of eighty-five thousand from free cash. Such funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager, and to authorize the town manager to accept any gifts or grants for such project.
Second.
Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend, and as in the previous article, these monies need to be expended before the end of this fiscal year, and therefore they were included in the special so that we would be able to accomplish that.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Voting is open. All those in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Voting is closed, and the article passes one hundred and twenty-eight to twelve. Article number five, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article number five, Powder Point Bridge Capital Project Funding. I move that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred dollars to the Powder Point Bridge Capital Project Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred dollars from free cash.
Second.
Finance Committee voted to support, eight-zero. The reason that this is coming up now is that we need to pay off the short-term borrowing from a previous article, and if we, and did not feel that this was an appropriate amount to put in long-term financing.
Seeing no, no questions, and sensing no interest in debate, I'll call for motion, I'm sorry, I'll call for vote. All those, voting is now open. All those in favor, press Voting is closed, and our article passes one twenty-seven to ten. Article number six, Mrs. Sullivan.
Assessors Legal and Appraisal Services. I move that the town appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to the Assessors Legal and Appraisal Services, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of twenty thousand dollars from the overlay surplus.
Second.
Finance Committee voted to support, eight-zero. The funds are needed to address some legal services and appraisals for, of pending abatement request.
Any further discussion or debate? Sensing none, I'll call for a vote. All, voting is, voting is now open. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Motion carries one twenty-five to fourteen. Article number seven.
Special Education Reserve Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and five dollars to the Special Education Reserve Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and five dollars from free cash. Such funds to be expended under the direction of the school committee.
Second.
This was supported by Finance Committee, eight-zero. As in previous years, after we established this particular savings account or stabilization fund for expenditures from school committee for special education, monies that they return to the town at the end of the fiscal year are then, at the following town meeting, put in the stabilization fund to help them meet unexpected costs that can occur through new students in special ed department, the special ed needs.
Any discussion or questions? Sensing none, we will now vote. Voting is open. All those in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Motion passes one twenty-six to eight. Article nine, I'm sorry, Article Eight Pension Reserve Fund.
Pension Reserve Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of, excuse me, ninety-one thousand to the Pension Reserve Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of ninety-one thousand from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted to support, eight-zero. This is a continuation of an ongoing initiative to add to this Pension Reserve Fund.
Mr. Adams, our Finance Director has some comments.
Good morning. In Articles eight through twelve, the town seeks to put aside enough in the town's specific reserves to adhere to the town's financial policies and objectives. The Finance Committee, along with town administration, worked over the summer to improve upon the town's fiscal policies first drafted in two thousand and thirteen. The updated policy includes various best practices and benchmarking to provide performance measures the town can readily use to make sure that it is adhering to its objectives. And these policies were adopted by the Board of Selectmen on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Reserves are an important part of the town's resources. The primary objective of the town's reserve policy is to provide the town with the flexibility to sustain service levels despite any adverse financial impacts or downturns in the economy, or any unforeseen and extraordinary expenses. You will find in the explanation of each article the purpose of each reserve, the current amount in each reserve, the amount needed to be placed in each to achieve compliance with town policy. And the entire Town of Duxbury Financial Management Policies and Objectives can be found on the town's website on the Finance Department's webpage. Thank you.
Are there any questions or debate? Sensing none, I'm gonna ask for a vote on Article number eight Pension Reserve Fund. Voting is open. It's one for yes, two for no. Voting is now closed, and the article passes one hundred and twenty-eight to seven. Article number nine.
Other Post-Employment Benefits, or otherwise known as OPEB. I move that the town appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand to the Other Post-Employment Benefit Trust Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of three hundred thousand from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted eight-zero to recommend. I think the explanation was just amply given by our Finance Director.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Sensing none, I'll ask for, for a vote on Article number nine. Voting is now open. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press Motion passes one twenty-one to eleven. Article number ten.
Accrued Liabilities and Compensated Absences Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand to the Accrued Liabilities and Compensated Absences Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer thirty-five thousand from free cash to such fund to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Finance Committee voted to support, eight-zero.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Voting is open. All those in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Voting is closed, and the article passes one twenty-five to seven. Number eleven.
Unemployment Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars to the Unemployment Trust Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer thirty thousand from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Finance Committee supported, voted eight-zero. Same reason as the previous, previous, previous
Seeing no questions, I'll, I'll ask for a vote. Voting is open. All those in favor, Voting is now closed. The motion passes one twenty-seven to eight. I'm happy to say the last article in the special town meeting, Mrs. Sullivan, number twelve.
Stabilization Fund. I move that the town appropriate the sum of six hundred and five thousand dollars to the Stabilization Fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of six hundred and five thousand dollars from free cash to such fund.
Second.
Finance Committee voted to support, eight-zero. As you might recall, in our extra meeting that we had, we had to take monies from our savings account, or otherwise known as our stabilization account, to fund repairs and to backfill deficits that we had incurred because of work that needed to be done during the fiscal year. It was stated at that time, and this is a continuation, that those funds would be replaced at the earliest meeting and once free cash had been certified. So, in, as a result, that is what we are doing. This is done to keep our savings account and our stabilization at a, a level that is designed through our guidelines, and also in an effort to preserve our triple-A bond rating, and have the bond agencies not think that we are spending from our savings account to support operating. Thank you.
I believe we have a question in the back of the room?
The, the last paragraph of the article indicates a balance of four point six seven five million. Will that include the deductions that we've made from free cash in the previous
Does someone have an answer?
I have to say that, that I don't know if it's me, or if it's the acoustics, but I am having some trouble hearing the questions, and I apologize for that. Would you mind?
That's okay. The, the last paragraph of the article says that there will be a balance of four point six seven five million at the end of fiscal year nineteen. Does that total take into account the transfers that we have just approved?
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
Mr. Adams.
John Antle for dress.
I think there's a difference between free cash and stabilization. This is a stabilization account. There's no previous articles took from stabilization. Okay?
Sorry, it was an easy question, I just couldn't hear.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Voting is now open. All those in favor, press one. Opposed, press two. Voting is closed. The motion passes one twenty-seven to seven. That completes the business and the warrant for the special town meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Sonny Dai.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is now closed. The motion passes one oh eight to two. Before we pick up the annual town meeting, I'm gonna ask Mr. Reed to come forward. We have some special notices we'd like to make of, of some events here.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for attending today. We appreciate you being here. Before we get underway with the annual town meeting, I wanted to recognize Representative Josh Cutler and Senator Patrick O'Connor, who have a brief announcement they'd like to make with respect to our police chief, who, believe it or not, is actually thinking of retiring. The question of whether or not we let him is still up in the air, but it looks like all indications are pointing to yes. But if you don't mind, we'll yield to them for just a few moments. We're also gonna recognize our town accountant Claudette Kootu, who also is retiring. Don't worry, it's not a trend. It's just that these two folks are deciding to It's just that these two folks are deciding to retire. And if we could have them both come down here, it'd be terrific. Thank you.
Morning.
Happy town meeting?
Yeah.
Where's Claudette? Coming down? Ah. Chief Clancy, want to mosey down too? So, good morning. We're happy to be here. I'm Representative Josh Cutler. And my colleague's Senator O'Connor. And one of the joys of sort of our job is to come here and recognize folks who've contributed so much to our community. And we're here today to recognize two such individuals. And we have a special presentation. I'll let Pat handle that. But just wanted to first acknowledge Claudette Kootu, our town accountant. And I know, you know, no one writes poems about town accountants, but it's such an important job. And think about all the things we're doing here at Town Meeting. Wouldn't be possible without having the folks back doing all the books and good things that make all that possible. I can speak firsthand back when we did the War Memorial Project, how integral Claudette was to that. And we were raising money and trying to get that project put back up. So she's really done a tremendous job for the town of Duxbury. We're so pleased to be able to help recognize that. And I'd like to now, I guess, turn it over to my colleague Senator O'Connor to offer a couple remarks. And we wanted to give Claudette a citation, but not the citation that Chief Clancy gives, the good kinds. So my colleague Senator Patrick O'Connor.
Good morning, everybody. It's an honor to be here today at Duxbury's town meeting. Obviously, the purest form of democracy in action right now. I just wanted to echo on some of the sentiments that Representative Cutler had said. Claudette, thank you for your years of service to the town of Duxbury. Prior to becoming a state senator and prior to becoming state representative, both of us spent time in municipal government, so we know that this is where the rubber meets the road and making sure that all of our books are in line and all the various different things that are being set up now with unfunded liabilities and everything that really was just voted on. When you look at all of the different accounts that are there, we really appreciate you keeping that order for this town. And this is one of the marquee towns in the entire Commonwealth, and it's because of people like you that turn towns into communities. So thank you very much for your service to the town. And on behalf of the Massachusetts State Senate, we had read into the record the other day, a citation for you Claudette, in recognition of your service to the town of Duxbury as the town accountant, and for your outstanding commitment to public service. And be it known that the Massachusetts Senate extends nothing but best wishes for your continued success. And it's signed by Senate President Karen Spilka, myself, State Senator Pat O'Connor, on March 9, 2019. Congratulations Claudette, and best wishes for continued success.
Thank you. It has been a pleasure to serve Duxbury. It's been almost 13 years that I've been here. And prior to this, I was in Rochester for almost 20. So it's been, I've loved this job from the day that I started doing it. And thank you for your support.
We also want to thank and recognize our wonderful police chief, Matt Clancy, who is sadly retiring. We've watched, I can recall vividly when the chief was first hired, and all of you know what a wonderful job he has done in our community over the last 10 years. When you think about, I guess, community policing is really sort of the term you hear tossed about a lot these days, and no one has embodied that symbolism and idea of community policing better than our chief, Matt Clancy, here in Duxbury. If you think about all the different ways he's been involved in the community and gotten our police department involved in the community, just walking through the tables out front, see Duxbury facts and all the wonderful work that they've done and how integral Chief Clancy has been to that, the new behavioral health team that he's helped institute, the real professionalism that he's continued to bring and build in the department, it's truly a wonderful thing. But I don't have to tell you guys all that. You all know that. But one thing you may not know is how well-respected he is outside of the community of Duxbury. Past president of the Police Chiefs Association for our region, I can tell you from talking to chiefs in other parts of the state and other parts of the South Shore, how well-respected and admired he is. So he's truly been a wonderful addition to the town of Duxbury. We're really going to miss him. I'm personally very sad to see him move on, but happy for him. And so we're here today to help recognize our wonderful chief. And again, I'm going to just turn it over to Senator O'Connor to offer him some remarks as well. Thank you.
I really think that Josh hit it on the head as far as the respect outside of the community. You know, you see how safe this community is, and you see some of the challenges, some of the real challenges that made the evening news that Duxbury has had to face since Chief Clancy has been in there. But when it comes to issues like criminal justice reform, when it comes to issues as far as sentencing reform and these major statewide initiatives, Chief Clancy is the first one on the phone to call myself or Josh to offer his insight into this because of how experienced he is in these certain subject matters. And it really is a true loss to the town of Duxbury to not have you here, but thank you for your time that you've put in. Clearly, as I said before, this is one of the best communities that we have here in the Commonwealth, and it's because of people like you. And we read into the record a citation for you, chief. And it says, "Be it known that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts offers a citation to Duxbury Police Chief Matt Clancy, in recognition of your 10 years of service to the town of Duxbury as police chief, and for your outstanding and dedicated career in law enforcement and public safety, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate and House of Representatives extends best wishes for continued success to you and your family." Signed by Senate President Karen Spilka, myself, State Senator Pat O'Connor, on the 9th of March. Chief, thank you.
The check will clear, Josh. Appreciate that. I guess it's just, it's been a very challenging but very rewarding time here in Duxbury, and I think that we leave you in good hands. You've got a tremendous group here. You truly do. One of the things I said that when I first arrived here and we had, were sort of fighting through some issues within the department, that some were perceived and might have been based in some reality, and some really were things that were just misconceived. But we did, collectively did a lot of work. But one of the things that really struck me was the, from the community policing standpoint and the dedication and the true connection to the town that you have with the men and women that are in that police department. It really is remarkable. You know, I've worked in four other towns, and this was absolutely very different. There was a true caring and understanding for what's best for the community, particularly the kids. I think that I noticed, it was very deeply with the officers, that they're, you know, they really have a watchful eye for your kids. They want the best for our Duxbury kids, and let's get them to their successful adulthood in one piece, and that really resonates with these folks. And now, some of the other things that we're doing now is as the landscape in law enforcement has changed dramatically with the opiate crisis, and we truly have, since we've sort of decentralized our mental health services, mental health has become a tremendous concern for law enforcement. We find that we have to start filling holes with some of the services that have gone away. And a lot of folks are critical, you know, why are the police doing this? Well, frankly, nobody else, it seemed to us that really nobody else was. And we're the ones on the front line that see the impacts of that immediately. So, you know, it just comes from the men and women inside your police department that have proposed programs and followed through on them, particularly the Crisis Intervention and now the Behavioral Health Unit, that are making tremendous impacts. And these are, this is all the work that these folks are doing. So you've got a very intelligent, compassionate group, and I really feel proud to have worked with them the last 10 years, and I think they're going to absolutely continue to serve you very well moving forward. So thank you all very much.
The 2019 Annual Town Meeting will now reconvene where we left it, which was at Article One. Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a motion for Article One at the Annual Town Meeting?
Article One is a notice to inhabitants of the coming election. No vote is required. I move that the town bring in their votes for the following offices. One town clerk for a term of three years. One selectman for a term of three years. One moderator for a term of three years. One assessor for a term of three years. Two school committee members for a term of three years. Two planning board members for a term of five years. Two library trustees for a term of three years. One library trustee for an unexpired term of two years. And one library trustee for an unexpired term of one year. And on the following question. Oh, shall the town of Duxbury be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to obtain engineering and design services for construction of a new Department of Public Works facility to be located at 878 Tremont Street, also known on Assessor's Map Parcel Number 092-500-016.
Second.
Thank you. Article Number Two, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town receive the reports of town officials, boards, committees, and commissions.
We actually have one small report. It will be delivered by Kathleen Glynn of the IT Steering Committee. Since this is a motion, I am going to ask for a quick vote on this, that you are interested in hearing what she has to say. Voting is now open. Voting will soon be open. Voting is now, is now open. One for yes, two for no. I must say, we seem to have a decisive group here today. Voting is now closed. It passes 120 to 18. Mrs. Glynn, may we have your report, please?
I'm here as one of the co-chairs of the Information Technology Steering Committee to give you a progress report as directed by Article 19 from last year's town meeting warrant. Quick refresh on Article 19. The town authorized the Board of Selectmen to appoint an 11-member IT Steering Committee to work with an independent consultant to scope and develop a town-wide, three-year information technology master plan. The Board of Selectmen appointed the following individuals to participate in the committee. Myself and Alex Chin are co-chairs from the Finance and Fiscal Advisory Committee. Dave Madigan, Board of Selectmen. Lieutenant Chip Chubb, Police Department. Captain Rob Reardon, Fire Department. Mike Mahoney, who's the director of the Regional Old Colony Communications Center, which is The Rock. Dr. John Antonucci, Superintendent of Schools. Cheryl Lewis, School IT Director. Mike Woodford, School Network Administrator. Julia Adams, Member of the School Committee. Rainey Reed, Town Manager. Mary Beth McQuory, Town IT Director. With us a lot of people. But a couple of things. As our technology demands and expectations rise, we need a holistic and enterprise-wide approach to deliver technology services as an integral part of the overall town operations. This is the first time ever we've looked at our technology needs from a town-wide perspective, and that's why we have such great representation, which all the people I just read off to you. Some committee highlights. The committee met 11 times this year over a period of, actually, over a period of eight months, not just this year, starting in June of 2018. With the help and the wisdom of our friend and municipal director, Scott Lambiezi, we successfully completed the request for proposal process to select an IT consultant. Thank you very much, Scott. In February of this year, the committee unanimously selected the IT consultant, and we're in the process of finalizing the statement of word. We anticipate the consultant engagement to take between four to six months, beginning with a kickoff meeting scheduled in mid-April with the IT Steering Committee and the department heads. Completion of the engagement is anticipated to be mid to late fall of this year, which aligns with our fiscal year 2021 budget season. The IT Steering Committee will present a recommendation at the March 2020 town meeting. And this concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Onto Article Number Three, Mrs. Sullivan. May we have a motion?
I move that the town fix the compensation of the elected town officers for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2019, as set forth in the column entitled Finance Committee Recommended FY '20 as Printed in the Warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee voted to support, eight-zero.
Any questions or discussions on this? Seeing none, I will call for a vote, and I will just let you know, voting is now open. One for yes, two for no. Instead of taking 20 seconds, we'll take 15 seconds. We seem to be a decisive group that votes quickly. And watching it tick down has all the thrill of watching paint dry. Voting is closed. It passes 128 to 10. Article Four, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $135,000 to implement the personnel policy and provide funding for any other salary or compensation not addressed by the personnel policy as printed in the warrant, and to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Finance Committee voted to recommend, eight-zero.
I believe we have at least one question coming. Mrs. McNabb, if you...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Amy McNabb, 269 Old Toby Garden Street. Last year after town meeting, I became aware that the pay raises were anywhere across the board from 3% to about 24.8%. I'm assuming that this article would incorporate, again, some raises, and my question is, will there be raises across the board, again, between 3% and 24%?
Mr. Reed.
I'm going to let Rainey and Jeannie Horn, our HR Director, address your question.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch the last part of your...
She wants to know if the raises are going to be the same as last year.
The, Mr. Reed, if you could answer it.
The answer to the question is, it remains to be determined, but what I'd like to do is show you something that I think might help illustrate the genesis of the question. Last year, the HR Department and myself worked with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen to come up with recommended personnel plan changes. And we presented this to the Finance Committee on February 8 of 2018, so last year. The goal was, forgive me, to create a comprehensive, clearly defined compensation structure that was cost-effective, incremental, competitive, and consistent detailing pay practices and defining pay terminology. What we had found is that there were a lot of positions that were either very low when we did comparable pay scales, looking at other communities, or that had become subject to salary compression. So we knew that there was a problem that we had to fix. So what we did was we took a three-year approach to do it on an incremental basis. And our objectives were to conduct a market pay survey confirming actual pay and pay ranges for similar positions in similar surrounding and responding towns. Those towns were Carver, Cohasset, Dennis, Hingham, Kingston, Marshfield, Pembroke, Rockland, Sandwich, Situate, West Bridge Road, and Westwood. We had a good cross-section with those towns because they were, some were very similar, and they had similar positions. Then we audited the existing personnel pay, excuse me, personnel plan pay ranges and the pay structure, not individual jobs, compared to benchmark results. The revised pay ranges, then we revised the pay ranges as necessary for conformance with our audit results, the Fair Labor Standards Act, and the Massachusetts Equal Pay Act requirements. What we then did was eliminate piecemeal or individual pay adjustments, which undermine the overall pay system. Then we compared the personnel plan to other internal employment documents and made the related adjustments. Then we created pay guidelines to replace salary administration guidelines. Then what we took was outline the next steps, which is what we did last year. We examined individual jobs, pay, and compression. We audited the results for conformance with the Fair Labor Standards Act and the Massachusetts Equal Pay Act. Then we redefined and simplified the merit and performance review process. We sought and received town meeting approval to remove the policies and procedures from the personnel bylaw. the personnel bylaw. We did budget equity and/or merit pay annually or as necessary. Then we linked the performance review ratings to the town's mission and specific merit pay results. Then we identified and automated easy-to-use and customized performance review tool, which the Finance Committee took a look at this past winter, and we moved forward with that. Then we provided pay guidelines and performance evaluation training for supervisor, audience, and employee audience. Then we created a service recognition program. We're not sure how we're going to do that, but it's one of the things we're contemplating. So going forward, every three years, as required by the Mass Pay Equity Pay Act, we're going to reexamine the pay structure and pay practices, conduct market pays, surveys to ensure internal and external equity, and then make adjustments as needed. The lesser-winded answer is, when looking at Duxbury on the global scale, we noticed that Duxbury's pay ranges were actually in the lower third. What we did was decide that we're not going to become the upper third. What we were shooting for was the midpoint, and that's what we've been doing over the course of the last three years. So as a result of that, some positions received the larger increases, and other positions remained right where they were because they were already correct.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. I, um, I appreciate the answer, but I, I, I'm concerned about this. The reality is that everyone received at least a 3% increase. Some folks received as much as a 24 or over $20,000 a year increase for that year and then moving forward. In the private sector, we don't get raises just because, and when we do get raises, they're based on merit, promotion, and otherwise. There used to be a balance, there used to be a difference in the public and the private sector. If you worked in the public sector, you maybe made slightly less per hour or in salary because your benefits were such, and your hours were such, and your commitment to the hours were such, that it, it was a balancing game, and you outweighed, you know, your benefits paid for, maybe slightly less in an hourly rate. In the private sector, we simply don't get the benefits that are offered if you're working for the public sector. You don't get cars to drive with gas that's, that's available through the town. You don't get the amazing retirement and pension plans that, that the town offers. This concerns me that we are bringing the salaries and the pay scales up to a private sector level and still offering the significant benefit packages. I think it's great, and I don't mean that anybody here doesn't deserve that. What I'm concerned about is what this means for the demographic of the town of Duxbury. It's creating a tax base that the average person simply can't afford. We cannot, it's, it's, you know, we're, we're turning into a town that only the most elite and the most rich can afford to live in, and that is not the Duxbury that has been historically lobbying. That's not what we want to be. I don't think it is. I think maybe there are some people that do want to be that, but I think overall, we don't. I don't think that's a good thing, and I, and I hope we can look at this, and I hope that we can make some changes so that we don't create that type of elitist town. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, I, I am empathetic to that position. The reality of the genesis of the question is that what you're talking about are adjustments that were made for 12 employees out of all of the union and non-union personnel. Again, those were made for market adjustment reasons, pay compression issues, and a couple of positions had actually been vacated so that once the person that was in the prior position had taken, had moved up from a department head-level position, from a subordinate position, it created sort of an artificial high, meaning somebody went from a lower-paying position to a higher-paying position so that it looked like they were getting a massive raise, when in fact, they were, they were getting a pay increase because they were also taking on a department head-level position. So it can be a little bit misleading. With respect to the elitism aspect, I don't see that happening at all. In fact, I think we've done a pretty good job to make sure that we're not doing that. We are not the highest-paying town on the South Shore, we're not the highest-paying town on the state. We are kind of aiming for Midland. That's the idea, because we know that it's affordable. The other thing is, we don't make these increases all at once. We try to do them over time incrementally. So we work with the employees to help explain that, saying that we are, we are understanding of where their positions are in the market, and then how we're going to get there in the long run, because I don't want to break the bank doing this either. And we also want to make sure that whenever a new law comes in, like the Equal Pay Act, that we're actually able to comply with it and afford to be able to do so. So we are very mindful of that, and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote on Article number four. Voting is open. All those in favor, press one; opposed, press two. Voting's closed. Article passes 112 to 35. Before we start our work on Article number five, which is the operating budget for the town of Duxbury, we have a couple of presentations that, that we will hear. Mr. Reed and Mrs. Sullivan both have some remarks. Before we start, Superintendent Dr. Antonucci will be speaking before we deal with the school budget. So, Mrs. Sullivan, I guess you get to go first.
I think this is a ladies-first situation. Good morning. I stand before you again to give you a brief overview of the work that we've completed this year, things that we see as trends, things we're concerned about, things that we think are going well. As I do every year, I'd like to start by thanking the amazing committee that I am working with on finance and our partners on fiscal. The hours that, that your community members put in to this purpose is, would be shocking to most, most of the folks that live here. We enjoy our work. They're really wonderful people. I am, I am so impressed every year at the intelligence, the dedication, and the dedication to this town in particular that these folks bring, and I thank them very sincerely. I also want to assure you that the people at Town Hall, the department heads, our town manager, our selectmen, they are amazing, amazing folks. We are blessed, and I think that's an expression that's maybe overused, but it is quite accurate in this particular instance. They care about the town of Duxbury. They try to do what is in our best interest. They want their departments and their endeavors to be the best that they possibly can be. They want to deliver the best services to this community, and we start the dance in September to try to accommodate providing that with the funds that we have available. I had a brief conversation with Dr. Antonucci, who we all know, you know, he and I have had some lively conversations since he arrived. And we go out into the public, and when we hire folks such as, you know, I don't know how we replace Matt Clancy or Claudette, I, these are shining examples of the wonderful people that have been working for you every day, and we ask them to deliver the best. We tell them we want to be the best, and we ask them what they will do to take us on that journey. And then we start to talk about how we can afford what we have charged them to bring to us, and it's not always an easy conversation, so I thank them. And I will tell you that even though the conversations can get lively, they're done with respect, and we are working hard to bring you, the community, the services that you have asked for and that you deserve. So, last year's town meeting had some surprises. Unlike previous years, there were motions to increase budgets that we had not previously seen happen in other town meetings that prevailed. As a result, some of our reserves were, were tested, and we had to return to a special to make up for deficits so that we could stay in good standing with the Department of Revenue and that we could have our tax rates set for the next year. This should have been, should not have been a surprise, but it was to a certain extent. It was not past practice. So being mindful of that, we have redoubled our efforts on, on both sides, with the schools, with other town departments, to understand what it is exactly that they need, what it is that they want, always two different situations, and how we can help provide those services to the town. We need to decide whether we are happy with what we are doing now, whether we think that's enough, or whether we want something other than that. And I think those conversations will continue next year, and it should be interesting. I would ask all of you to stay engaged. Surprises are good for birthday parties, maybe, but not for this, and we do not want anyone to come back to this hall next year and be surprised at the, the debate as to resources, how much, and for what. So those works will continue, and we thank the school department. They have, you know, as again, it's been a lively conversation, and we have both sat down and not always agreed, but then tried to be respectful of each other and understand where the end of resources bring us in their journey to provide education as well as every other department. It isn't just schools. The Public Safety had asked for additional staff this year, which did not happen. I believe every department had made requests for either additional staff or equipment that we said no to because the resources were not available, and I know that those conversations will not end. We also have had some capital projects. They're always going to be there. The seawall was, I, I took an extraordinary amount of time away from the day-to-day business this year. It was something that nobody, well, maybe we should have been able to predict it, but the weather is, is not predictable, and we have worked many, many long hours in trying to come up with a solution that you will see in the, in the article, whatever that article is. What number is it? 13? Oh, that wasn't by design. And so, Article 13, and we'll let you know how we're going to manage through on that, and the only thing that I will say about that now is capital, especially the seawall, is a never-ending story. This is not a building that we build and hope that will last for 50 years. This is us against Mother Nature, and I think we all know where to bet on that particular engagement. We're going to be discussing the DPW. I think that one of the things I've said to Rainey and to, and to Peter, calling it the DPW barn has been a marketing faux pas. It is not just a garage, it is a facility to house offices. It is a place for us to plan ahead on the space requirements at Town Hall and to move some of the folks that are in Town Hall now to a more appropriate facility and therefore keep us in the future from having to expand that Town Hall to manage what the community needs and growth within our staff. So that'll be an interesting conversation. The bridge and the beach lease, what defines us? If I think you asked, most of the people in, in the community, the beach would be definitely one of the top three things that defines this town, if not the first thing. It's our relationship with the bay that makes us what we are. It's our dedication to the environment, it's our dedication to education. And there are going to be conversations surrounding the bridge. Is it wood? Is it cement? Is it falling down? Is it standing up? Is it closed? Is it open? I don't know. We have to talk those things through, and we need to manage that as far as what it's going to cost and what the town is looking for us to do. We have renewed our efforts to work in partnership with the reservation as far as the beach lease and what the town can manage to pay and what the, the reservation can manage as far as they, what they need to do to preserve this amazing asset. And we will, we will get there, as long as we remain open to each other and, and try to understand what the other one needs and what we can accomplish together. I have no doubt in my mind that we will, we will be able to accomplish and come to good resolutions on these things. We are going to have to have conversations about budgets. Do we want to maintain services, or are we looking for improvement? This is going to be the conversation of the next year, and I would again ask you to stay engaged, voice your opinions, and help us come to the answer that is right for Duxbury, not for anywhere else. So, that's what you're going to be seeing today. Our work will continue. We will not stop meeting. We'll probably get back together again after a bit of a hiatus after this and start working on these issues. I will assure you that the folks in Town Hall start working on the next year's budget, probably at the close of the town meeting, and we will continue to work with them and to try to be good stewards of the monies that you give us through your taxes, and try to be good listeners as to what you would like us to do in the future. And we thank you so much for your support and the fact that we all get to live in this beautiful place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Good morning, and thank you all for attending this year's special and annual town meetings. As a departure from years past, I'm going to provide you with a somewhat abbreviated budget presentation, but I have provided copies of the more detailed narrative form of the document, which are available on the tables leading into this room. They're on green-colored paper, if anybody would like to really get into the deeper analysis. I wanted to hit a couple of highlights. I'm pleased to tell you that the FY20 operating budget I bring forward today for your consideration is balanced. There are no new positions being recommended in this budget, with the exception of one new part-time custodian being funded in the Police Department and a part-time administrative assistant in the Fire Department being increased to full-time. We were not able to fund the request of one new firefighter, three new police officers, and a host of other regular expense increases. We were able to meet the school department's level service budget request at a 3.4% increase over FY2019 while being able to increase the town's operating budget by 3.3%. Currently, all of our collective bargaining agreements have expired, and while we are pleased that we could achieve desired levels for our FY20 budgets, that, the strain that settled contracts could have looms on the horizon for FY21. With regard to revenues, almost 80% of our proposed budget is derived from taxation. Our new growth figure peaked in FY17 to just over $900,000, but since that time, new growth has decreased over 37% to just $575,000 in FY19. State aid, which makes up 8% of our local revenue stream, continues to remain fairly flat. Finally, with respect to local receipts, which account for 11% of our revenues, we continue to use our conservative estimates in order to help generate free cash at year end in an effort to provide money for capital expenditures, as well as to avoid any potential revenue deficits. In addition to the recommendations contained in the operating budget, you will find similar recommendations on the capital budget, which we will be discussing shortly. Using the flexibility of statehouse notes, we are, we are proposing to borrow just over $500,000 to fund the purchase of Chromebooks for the state, excuse me, for the school department's one-to-one student-to-technology program. By using statehouse notes, we will be given the ability to push out the first payment to FY2021, which will give us time to work this into our capital plan moving forward. This year, the Water Department has a notable and important project, which is to complete the replacement of the PCE pipes. Rather than funding the project at $150,000 per year and waiting to do replacements over a much longer period of time, we are recommending borrowing to complete these projects with an average debt service costing about $150,000 to $160,000 a year. This will allow us to complete the project within two years. This will allow us to complete the project within two years. Setting the stage for FY '21 and beyond. Duxbury is approaching an interesting financial intersection. We have all come to enjoy the many services this town has to offer, and year after year, as we attempt to meet our residents' expectations, for the past few years, this has become harder and harder to do. Our ability to provide services to the level of citizens, that the level of citizens, that the level citizens expect, is an ever-growing challenge. Our public safety departments, fire, police, and DPW have been stretched for some time, and their ability to deliver their services is a challenge. Also, we are in the beginning stages of negotiating collective bargaining agreements, which will need to be funded in the next year. Dr. Antonucci will be carefully explaining that the school department is also faced with a number of challenges for the upcoming year, and together, for the next budget year, we believe that we will be able to meet our needs at this most basic level. However, as I have mentioned in the past, the prospect for an override for the FY '21 budget is a very real probability and one that deserves thoughtful and lengthy discussion. These discussions have already begun and will certainly be at the forefront of the budget development over the course of the next year. As these conversations continue with the board of selectmen, the finance committee, and the school committee, I encourage all of you to attend their meetings, become familiar with the process and the challenges that we will all be facing, and add to that conversation. In the meantime, I am comfortable with the town's position at present for FY '20, and we will continue to work closely with all of our departments, boards, committees, and the public as the conversation about funding future years continues. My sincerance thanks goes to the board of selectmen and the finance committee for their continued support, encouragement, and direction throughout this process. I'd also like to thank the fiscal advisory committee, the school committee, and all of our volunteer board and committee members who serve our community so well. They are to be commended for their tireless efforts. Additionally, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of our department heads, and they're all sitting right over there, and their staffs for all of their hard work and dedication, and let them know that I appreciate all of their efforts. And to my new friend, John Adams, who after having finished up his first year probably feels like he's been working here for about 10, thank you so much for all of your help and your creative ideas. Finally, as we all know, this is our last town meeting for not only our police chief, Matt Clancy, but also for our town accountant, Claudette Kootub. I want to sincerely thank them both for all of their work here in Duxbury. You've left a tremendous legacy, of which you should both be extremely proud. I, along with everyone assembled here today, sincerely thank you for your dedication to Duxbury and wish you a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Thank you both so much, and my thanks to all of you for being here. And I had two quick notes. I wanted to wish Alex Chin a happy birthday, and I want to wish one to Nancy O'Connor, whose birthday will be on Tuesday. And with that, I leave you with the budget.
Thank you very much. And in a little bit, we will be hearing from Dr. Antonucci as well. Some comments before we start work on Article 5, which is the operating budget. The budget figures start on page 15 of your warrant if you want to follow along, and depending on what we do under this article, there may be some changes. We will be dividing Article 5 into three separate motions. The general fund operating budget will be one, the school operating budget will be a second, and the water enterprise fund will be a third. Our water department is an enterprise account, so we vote that budget entirely separately. For the regular portion of our operating budget, we will follow our past practice of separately considering the major budget subheadings of the general fund operating budget and school operating budget separately. The chairman of the finance committee will move each of these major subheadings separately, and we will then discuss and vote on the section that has been moved. The chair of the finance committee will read the line items. If you have a question or want additional information or wish to change an amount, please shout "hold." After the entirety of the motion has been read, we will go back and deal with, in numeric order, with the holds. However, the vote on the individual subheadings under the regular budget will not become final until we complete business under all of them and vote and approve grand total for the general fund operating budget and the school operating budget. Prior to making the final vote on that grand total, the entire general fund operating budget and school operating budget will be subject to amendment if it becomes necessary or desirable to do so. Once we have voted the grand total for the general fund operating budget and the school operating budget, we will then vote separately for the water operating fund. Inso much as the individual subheadings and budget items will not become finalized until we approve the grand total for those items, the normal rules regarding a motion for reconsideration will not apply to them. Once we have voted a grand total for the regular budget, any further changes to that budget will require a motion for reconsideration, and the normal rules on reconsideration will thereafter apply. Are there any questions? This is a similar procedure we've followed for quite a number of years, so I expect most of people have some idea of what I'm talking about. Mrs. Sullivan, may we have the first motion under Article 5 for the general fund operating budget?
Okay, let's go. Operating budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $41,935,138 as the general fund operating budget of the town as printed in the warrant in lines 1 through 76 and lines 80 through 91. For the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $40,943,561, and to transfer the sum of $991,577, of which $95,315 shall come from the Waterways Improvement Fund to fund line 38 and 39. $116,123 shall come from the Water Enterprise Fund revenue for lines 13, 41, 80, 81, 82, and 83. $296,800 shall come from the PEG Access Fund revenue for line number 20. $50,000 shall come from the Pension Reserve Fund for line 83. $418,215 shall come from the fund balance bond premium for line 88, and $15,124 shall come from the sale of real estate fund for line 88. To be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second.
I shall... Do you want me to go through 1 through 91 and just blast through? Okay.
Please.
General government. One, town meeting expenses, $4,300. Line two, moderator's salary, a big $40. Selectman manager, line three, salaries, $283,679. Line four, expenses, $13,792. Line five, historical commission expenses, $1,050. Finance committee, line six, salaries, zero. This is not a reflection of the efforts or the capabilities of this group. Line seven, expenses, $450. Accounting, line eight, salaries, $357,789. Line nine, expenses, $12,105. Audit, line 10, expenses, $48,000. Assessors, line 11, salaries, $245,956. Line 12, expenses, $22,000. Treasurer-collector, line 13, salaries, $276,278. Line 14, expenses, $84,672. Okay? Legal services, line 15, expenses, $202,000. Human resources, line 16, salaries, $135,800. Line 17, expenses, $36,560. Information systems, line 18, salaries, $167,595. Line 19, expenses, $413,535. Public television access services, line 20, expenses, $296,800. Tax title, line 21, expenses, $8,000. Town clerk, line 22, salaries, $159,751. Line 23, expenses, $27,755. Conservation commission, line 24, salaries, $148,702. Line 25, expenses, $13,615. Planning board, line 26, salaries, $133,990. Line 27, expenses, $11,105. Facilities management, line 28, salaries, $233,681. Line 29, expenses, $179,750. Public safety. Police, line 30, salaries, $3,247,430. Line 31, expenses, $423,010. Fire, line 32, salaries, $2,996,924. Line 33, expenses, $366,750. Regional dispatch, line 34, salaries, $659,847. Line 35, expenses, $33,500. Municipal services, line 36, salaries, $538,825. Line 37, expenses, $34,200. Harbor and coastal management, line 38, salaries, $331,804. Line 39, expenses, $72,850. Public works, central building services, line 40, salaries, $64,603. Expenses, line 41, $154,925. Tarkhill Community Center, line 42, expenses, $8,250. Animal control, line 43, salaries, $83,894. Line 44, expenses, $7,450. Land and natural resources, line 45, salaries, $488,888. 46, expenses, $54,200. Central fuel depot, line 47, expenses, $244,484. DPW administration, line 48, salaries, $332,984. 49 is expenses, $72,200. Vehicle maintenance, line 50, salaries, $172,917. 51, expenses, $172,000. Highway and road maintenance, line 52, salaries, $494,884. Line 53, expenses, $87,000. Snow and ice, line 54, salaries, $75,000. Line 55, expenses, $125,000. Streetlights, line 56, expenses, $45,000. Transfer station, line 57, salaries, $227,809. Line 58, expenses, $701,400. Expenses only? Thank you. Sewer, line 59, salaries, $16,613. Line 60, expenses, $247,100. Cemetery, line 61, salaries, $416,772. Line 62, expenses, $215,144. Cemetery expenses. Human services, council on aging, line 63, salaries, $454,893. Expenses, $177,230. Veteran services, salaries, line 65, salaries, $43,190. 66, line 66, expenses, $99,375. Plymouth County Cooperative Extension, line 67, expenses, $500. Library and Recreation, library, line 68, salaries, $992,710. Did I hear a hold? No, sorry. Line 69, expenses, $369,887. Recreation, line 70, salaries, $237,696. Line 71, expenses, $12,120. Percy Walker Pool, line 72, salaries, $195,428. Line 73, expenses, $100...
Was there a hold on that?
Per me?
Hold, 195,428.
Hold, I'm so sorry. On salaries for Percy Walker? Yep. Thank you. Thanks, John. Line 73, expenses, $145,840. Beach lifeguards, line 74, salaries, $33,480. Line 75, expenses, $2,693. North Hill Golf Course expenses, line 76, $1,500. Line 80, employee benefits, Medicare. I got to read it first, but I will, okay. $625,000. Jim, hold. Well, really, no, that would not be my wish, but you do what you need to do. 81, employee benefits, line 81, life insurance, $12,000. Line 82, employee and retiree health insurance, $8,543,417.
Mrs. Sullivan, can I just wait one second? Mr. Lampert, are you asking for a hold on line item 81 and 82?
I was asking, I was asking if I have to hold on each one to raise these questions and follow those lines here. Yes, I prefer it up there.
So that we know, so that we're clear on what we're going to be dealing with. So it's line 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85 in the end?
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
90 and 91, all right. Mrs. Sullivan...
That's dead. That's dead. Okay.
So, Mrs. Sullivan, if you'll just read, continue to read the numbers so it goes into the record, but you don't need to say "hold," Mr. Lampert. We get your point.
I think I read employee and retiree health insurance.
Yes, you did.
Next would be line 83, contributory pensions, $3,688,798. Non-contributory pensions, $20,000. Line 85, workers' compensation, $350,514. Fire liability insurance, $532,218. Line 87, reserve fund, $149,15. Debt service, town and school, line 88, principal payments, $5,940,690. Line 89, interest on bonded debt, $2,556,337. Line 90, interest on temporary notes, $10,000. Line 91, bond expense, $10,000.
Second. All right, we will go back and deal with the holds. If I have missed any, please, please let me know. I think the first hold I see is line item 14, expenses in the treasurer collector's line item.
That would be the first hold I have noted, yes.
Please, if you identify yourself, Mr. McDivitt.
As requested, I'm wondering what's behind the logic of it.
As requested, I'm wondering what's behind the logic of it.
Mr. Adams looks like he's ready with an answer.
Yes, good question. We have had, in the past year, we've had previous finance director retired, so we've had some salary savings in accounting. We've had a retirement in the treasurer collector's office, and we've had a recent retirement also in accounting on the payroll. It is our, we are looking actually to hire an outside service for payroll. So using those savings from those salary savings, and also some IT savings by removing our payroll module, we are, we are looking to go out for a request for proposals on outside services for payroll. We figure that will be more efficient. It saves the town from liabilities in case we are late in any sort of withholding situation. And it provides employees more of an opportunity as well to have access to W-two's and any remittances from any payroll checks as far as that's concerned. So, so some of those amounts then, those savings from the town accountant's office and those other retirements are going towards this line to help with the costs.
I think we're up to line item number twenty-nine now, expenses in facilities management?
Lester Lloyd, twenty-one Washington Street, could you just talk about the increase both requested and proposed in line twenty-nine for facilities management?
Mr. Cherry, would you like to come down here and speak? Thank you. Mr. Cherry is our facilities manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The majority of the expense increases this year is focused primarily on painting and exterior building. A lot of things that we focus on up until this point in the development of the department have been on a priority level, life safety, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. We seem to have our hands wrapped around that pretty much in a good way. But one thing that we're not doing is painting, and it's starting to show up townwide. The increases here wouldn't be related to school, but all the other buildings in town. We have painters on staff at the school department, we have two groundskeeper painters, but on the town side, we don't. We have four custodians that are sort of in their own areas of, and have their own duties during the day, from setup and breakdown to cleaning. But I don't think that we should be adding employees to do this work. I think that we can hire and go out to bid and get a lot of, maybe four to half a dozen significant painting projects a year done with this money.
Does that answer your question? Okay, next hold I have is-
Mr. Moderator, could I, sorry.
Please.
Could I just ask another question on facilities management, please?
Could you give me the line item, please?
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine, it's really about twenty-eight. I just wanted to confirm the salaries, how many people are in the facilities management department that are receiving the two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars?
Three.
Three people, thank you.
Okay, number, does someone have a question on line item thirty-eight?
Yes, Lester Lloyd, twenty-one Washington Street. If I recall, there was also a significant increase in the special town meeting for harbor and coastal management. I wondered if someone could talk about the requested and, and recommended numbers for salaries.
And we have, and I, and I believe we're gonna have an answer for you.
And also as related to the increase, if you don't mind, the increase that I, as I recall, was in the special town meeting as well.
Yeah, Jake Emerson, I'm the harbor master, so yeah, you're exactly correct. We did, excuse me, request additional funding for salaries. And it would put it pretty much almost exactly in line with what were, would be requested for FY twenty-twenty. Duxbury Beach is typically, how to say this, there's a lot of birds on Duxbury Beach, and it's, it's very hard to budget, and it's, I think it's very similar to the snow and ice type of mentality. So what we had done is gone for reserve fund transfers and things like that. But realistically, what, the way the budget should be done is to say, we should anticipate certain costs going forward, and that number reflects those. There's still the, the odd one-offs, and like when Rainey's first year, we got to shut the beach down for him. And then, the good news was, we turned around and handed him, you know, seventeen thousand dollars in unused salaries, because when you close the beach, you pretty much don't, you don't need the staffing. So, less beach open equals more staff to manage. And that, those numbers are pretty much part-time seasonal, and you also had a presentation that the minimum wage has increased to twelve dollars an hour as well. So I hope that explains the cause.
And I believe your point about the-
Ah, yes. Don Reed, thirty-one Captain's Hill Road, ah, yeah, that question, again, is the harbor master-
Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed, can I ask you to hang on just one second?
Sure.
I'd like to finish a thought, thank you. I believe your point about the transfer that happened in the special town meeting. At the special town meeting, we backfilled the current year's budgets of the total salary line item for two thousand and nineteen is now three hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. At the time this warrant was, was produced, it was two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. It's now almost identical year over year. Mr. Reed, you had a question?
Question, yes, is the harbor masters department now part of the police department? And are these salaries gonna be assumed by the police department, or is it gonna remain separate?
So, the harbor master department is a division of the police department. Going forward, I, I can't predict necessarily where these line items will fall in the future, but that's what we requested when we started the process. I, I hope that, I hope I made that super clear.
Okay, I believe we are now at line item forty-seven, central fuel depot expenses?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My question in this category kind of stems from last year, and I'm wondering, do, the, does this number include the public safety vehicles, fire department, police department?
All, all town vehicles that fuel, get gas from, and diesel from central fuel depot.
In addition to the public safety vehicles?
Correct.
And in addition to the town trucks, the DPW trucks?
Correct.
How many town employee vehicles does this include?
I don't have that number directly in front of me.
So we don't know how many department heads or vehicles are being used outside of the public safety and the DPW? Do we, do we have that number?
John seems to think it's twelve.
And those twelve vehicles also are able to fuel up at the central fueling?
Yes. All town vehicles.
Thank you.
I believe the next question has to deal with line item fifty-one, expenses for vehicle maintenance?
It's me again, I'm on a, I'm on a roll.
Mrs. McNabb, you're up, you're, you're at, you're at the microphone, it makes it easy, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Moderator. You know, it, it really just comes down to, when are we gonna start trying to save some money? And I know the finance committee does a great job, I, I, and I know you're probably asking these tough questions. But I think town meeting needs to speak at some time and let everybody know that we need to start tightening the belt. We're talking about borrowing money to fund the schools. We're, you know, the, the salaries in town just keep going up. Something's gotta give, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You can't have a big fat salary and your gas and your car to drive back and work, forth to work too. I'm sorry, but, you know, I, I think that, I'll stop talking and I'll, and I'll sit down for a while, and I'm sorry I'm taking up all of your time, but I, I just hope that people can try to, if you're with me here, let's let them know that we wanna start saving some money.
So, so I believe we take your point, and I, but I don't think there was actually a question we needed to answer. Okay, thank you. We had a question about the transfer station, line item number fifty-eight.
Lester Lloyd, twenty-one Washington, could you just talk about the increase both proposed and, and-
Sure. Some of you might have heard what they call China Sword, which is a large portion of our recycling markets in this country were going to China. China finally said, either clean up your recycling and bring us good recycling, or we're gonna stop accepting it. They stopped. When that happened, the recycling markets here in the United States went on their ear. A lot of the mills that were handling this material, these materials, closed. There was a period last spring where we didn't even have a place to bring recycled glass, and we're actually paying far more now to get rid of our recycling than we are our solid waste.
May I ask another question? Do you expect this, do you expect this to increase again next year?
I don't expect it, I hope to see it decrease. I think you're gonna start to see a lot of mills now come online in, in the United States, especially in northern Maine, in those areas. Once that happens, I think that'll take some of the pressure off. But when China Sword went through, it created a really big problem.
Thank you. The next hold we have is on the cemetery expenses, line item number sixty-two.
Sorry, Tom.
Mrs. McNabb.
Sorry, I'm up again, I did, I did promise, but-
Amy.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, I'm up again, I apologize. The, my next few holds are, are all on the same vein. We've got the cemetery, the pool, these are revenue programs that I'm wondering about the revenue that they're bringing in, in, as opposed to the cost to the town. So are we breaking even, are we making money? I'm always hoping that at least the salaries and the expenses are covered by whatever revenue they're bringing in.
They are.
Can you give me, for instance, the cemetery, are we making money on that?
Absolutely.
And do we have an amount?
I think Mr. Mr. Adams seems to be scurrying through his papers here, I think he's coming up with an answer for you.
For cemetery, so in two thousand and eighteen, the crematory revenues were seven hundred and two thousand, nine hundred. It collected another ninety-five hundred in fees and some departmental revenues of forty-four thousand. So they brought in a total of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars in fiscal eighteen.
So it's, it's covering it, but not, not by a ton? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Percy Walker Pool?
Yes, I think the next hold, I don't wanna jump in front of anybody who had another hold, but it was the pool.
Is the pool, and that's correct. Line item seventy-two, salaries, same question?
Same question, yes.
Is it Mr. Adams, or?
Take a shot at it. Thanks, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Cushing, I'm the recreation director. Thanks for the, thanks for the question, Amy. This has a little bit of history, because you may, town meeting may remember that the Percy Walker Pool was being administered through enterprise fund, which town meeting approved. That's gone back into the general fund. So part of the revenue stream that we used to collect because of the law that governs the enterprise fund, which were fees, we don't collect anymore, casting no aspersions, because we love having them there, but the school used to pay the town for the use of the programs at the pool. Fourth grade swim program, high school swim teams, et cetera. So those kinds of revenues, when you're under the general fund, are not collected. The, the town doesn't charge the town, so to speak, under that. So, the revenue picture is a little different now that we're back into the, the general fund rather than the enterprise fund. I'm sure John has the, the exact figure, but I, I would just like to say, in short, that the pool is not covering its expenses. I believe the, the story i- is getting better, we have some new programs. We brought back Aqueduct's swim team, which has really been quite successful. We used to swim in the Miramar Pond, for those of you who remember that, far back forty years ago. But that program's come back, and we've had really good registrations there. So it's, it's a good story, it's a continuing story, we've always had great support from the town. But it is, I just wanna make that distinction, that it's changed over from a different mechanism of budgeting from an enterprise fund to the general fund.
And Mr. Cushing, before you, before you go, just on that vein, I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, the school no longer is paying into the fund to utilize the pool services, is that correct?
Correct, so, and under the enterprise fund, I'll digress a little bit, like, the Percy Walker Pool and all the buildings in town, we pay our water bill to the town for the use of the water. The reason for that is the water enterprise is run by an enterprise fund. So the accounting mechanisms by, I'm probably not gonna say it right, but DOR, et cetera, require you to capture all of those costs. You might remember when we were in enterprise fund, the enterprise fund was charging the pool for a certain amount of overhead, for administrative, for health insurance, et cetera. So all of those fees have to be considered into that operation when you run it through an enterprise fund. Because the town wasn't capturing enough money in past years at the pool, we switched back to the, what we always had done, and go through the, the general fund, which had been done for more than thirty-five years. But in the general fund now, we would not charge, and never did prior too, when we were in the general fund. The school was not charged for its use. There's also small other, the fire department uses it for some training once in a while, the police department as well. We don't charge those municipal departments. When we were in enterprise fund, we had to, now that we're back in the general fund, we do not.
I, I think just for accounting purposes then, when we are looking at the school budget, there should be a little bit of additional funding that isn't being used in there, that in the past went to the pool, you know what I mean, out of one pocket into the other. The school should have the, whatever that money is left in their pocket, just, just keeping track of it.
Yeah, I, I would defer to the, to school and their budget folks for, for that kinda thing. But what I do know, when John Madden, former finance director, was here, was here, we came up with a figure of what we anticipated the, the school would be using, was about twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars worth of time, and John came to an agreement with the former superintendent, they put the money in that budget, that figure. So it was a, a net-net, if you will, the, the school department didn't receive a, a, a bundle of money, but they paid it from the, the funds that were there. So I, I don't know if it was taken back, I'm sure that it was, but again, we don't charge the school for the use of the pool.
Mr. Adams, you have some, some financial information?
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, the town and the school, we have some shared costs. And what we're trying to do is finalize, because there have been some changes like the Percy Walker Pool, is to actually put those shared costs in writing and come up with a shared cost agreement. So we, we are currently in that process, and we will be refining that. To answer your question specifically on the recreation pool revenues, in two thousand and eighteen, we had memberships of about thirty-one thousand, lessons for about eighty-nine thousand, guest fees, twenty-one thousand, and rentals about seventy thousand. So all total about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in revenue for Percy Walker Pool in fiscal two thousand and eighteen.
So that is, so that is a lot. So that is, so that is a loss, a loss in revenue. So we're subsidizing that.
That's correct. Yeah, and that's why we took it out of the Enterprise Fund and put it back into the General Fund, because there was a, a pattern of about five years that that had been going on. And the state came in and said, you can't run it on an Enterprise Fund anymore.
But the switching of the funds isn't, it, it, the, the switching of whatever account you're keeping the money in, still the result is the same. We're still losing money on this program.
Correct. Less the revenues that we weren't charging for, for programs that we've mentioned, but yes.
And is, are there plans in place to resolve this issue?
I think we've, we've met with the Finance Committee on a, on a bunch of bullet points about what we're trying to do to, to alleviate and cut into that, into that deficit. Will I stand here and I'll tell you that for sure, you know, we're going to have a break-even operation? I, I don't think that's actually something that probably is, is, could ever really happen right up to the dollar amount. But we are doing many things, you know, utilizing Facebook and other things, marketing-wise, to, to, to get our name out there. It's very competitive. You may or may not know that Marshfield recently opened a pool, so that bid into part of our, part of our business. But again, we believe it's part of the fabric of Ducksbury. It's a, it's a great facility that we're able to take advantage of, and, and we hope that you'll continue to support us.
I appreciate that, and I, I too hope, I too hope that we can get a handle on this, because I don't think other towns would be opening pools up if they didn't think that they were a viable, financial, positive thing to do. So hopefully we can get a handle on this, because this has, as you said, a long history behind it, and it seems like we keep, every year, we all keep, you know, backing it. We love the idea of the pool. We want to have it. We improve it. But it consistently and continues to be a, a, a revenue loser.
Yeah. And then, and the Marshfield Pool, just, and I'll, and I'll be clear, but it's not a standalone facility. You may know it's, it's part of the Boys and Girls Club, so there's gyms and fields and other scenarios. It's not a standalone facility. And I'm not aware of any municipality in the state of Massachusetts that's built just a standalone one, except for Braintree that's proposing it, but there's going to be other things with it.
Thank you.
Did you have something else to add, Mrs. Sullivan?
I, I just, I just wanted to, and I, I think Amy probably knows, the pool was a gift to the town. You know, many times we're offered things, and there's always the question, the Finance Committee, you know, can we afford the gift? This has never been a revenue generating facility. It's been looked at as a town service. We have been working very strongly with, with Gordon and on how the pool is managed. There was a dip in the monies because the pool had to be drained as a matter of maintenance. So we really aren't ever going to look at this as something that will generate revenue. It's, the best we can hope for is that it's a, a revenue neutral, and we will continue to work with them on that. But that being said, the pool in and of itself was a gift. We accepted the gift, and it is, after all of these years, parts of, part of the services that we offer the community. And, and I don't think that there has ever been any appetite to, to relinquish that gift or close it down. So it kind of is what it is, and, and Gordon has done, you know, a lot of work in the last couple of years in trying to make the pool. We're, we're using capital expenditures to make it an attractive facility and to get folks to use it that live here and perhaps groups from out of town as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
I believe we're now down to employee benefits. Mr. Lambert?
James Lambert, 148 Washington Street. And this question is not directed simply at employee benefits. John Adams raised a moment ago the issue of shared costs. Having the screen before me, the cost starting at line 80. Everything before that is broken down quite cleanly into school costs and the rest of the town costs. My question is really quite simple. There's 22 and a half million dollars on that slide behind me that is really all shared, if you wanted to use the term attributable to both schools and the rest of the town. And my question, perhaps for Mr. Adams or anyone else who can answer it, is what is the rough allocation of that 22.5? How much is fairly allocated to the schools and how much is fairly allocated to the rest of the town?
Mr. Adams, I think you're, I, I think you're up.
I know he's up.
That's a good question. I, I wish I had been given a heads-up on that. I, I do not have that kind of information in front of me. I know that my predecessor used to, used to dive into that quite a bit. I've had my hands filled with other things and don't have that allocation, but come by. My, my office is always open to anybody, any financial questions at all. Please stop by to see me, and, and I can give you a more, more dedicated answer. Okay? Yep.
Okay, I think we've answered all the questions. I think we're now, I think we're now ready for a vote. This would be the original motion. Can I get the original motion put back up? I think we're all pretty clear about, about what the motion is. I don't think there's a need to read it again. We made, we made no changes. So I'm, I'm going to call for a vote on motion one, Article Five, which is the General Fund operating budget. Voting is open. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is now closed, and it passes 176 to 23. We are now at motion number two, which is the school's operating budget. And I know our, our Superintendent, Dr. Antonucci, has some comments he'd like to make about the school's operating budget. So Dr. Antonucci will make his comments, and then, and then Mrs. Sullivan will make the actual motion to, to be voted on.
Okay.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Moderator, for giving me the chance to address Town Meeting this morning. I, I do appreciate the opportunity. Before I begin, I, I just want to point out, if anybody's enjoying the clarity of this screen today and the presentations, you can thank yourselves, because at last year's Town Meeting, we had a capital item to replace the projector in here, and I can assure you it's made a, a huge difference, especially if you're challenged with eyesight like I am. So anyway, thank yourselves. It's a, it's a nice screen. I am going to spend about the next 10 minutes just talking a little bit about this year's budget, the FY '20 budget, a little bit about the challenges we're facing, and then I'm going to touch very briefly at, at the future. Today, we're asking Town Meeting to approve an FY '20 School Department budget in the amount of 36.9 million dollars. It's an increase over fiscal year 19, last year, of 1.2 million, or, or 3.48 percent. As the town manager alluded, this is a level services budget, and what that means is that it's going to allow us to provide the same service next year that we are providing this year. And we build that by making budget adjustments to account for things like contractual obligations, changes in enrollment, or any other special circumstance. The good news is that there are no cuts to programs or services. We should celebrate that. But there are also no new programs or new innovations. And as it says here, at best, it really enables us to maintain what I call the status quo. That being said, I'm actually happy to be standing here and reporting, as Mrs. Sullivan, she just moved, indicated earlier, that we're actually all on the same page this year as it relates to the School Department budget. Our level service budget was approved by the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and I'm very appreciative for, for that. And having a budget agreement so early in the year really has allowed us to focus on the things that we want to do, which is focus on the students, focus on education, and not necessarily focus on the budget for four or five months. So I really thank everybody in this room for coming together and approving the level services budget. Of course, I'd be lying if I said that I wouldn't, that I didn't prefer a larger budget, one that would allow us to grow and to innovate. But given the fiscal climate and given the realities of the town's financial position, this is an exceptional position to be in today. I will say that regardless of the fiscal climate, there is great value to me in the budget process, no matter how much money we're, we're talking about. It gives me an opportunity to educate you, the community, about the Ducksbury Public Schools. I really think it has the benefit of promoting dialogue and community engagement, in this case around the needs of the district, the Ducksbury Public Schools. And very importantly, it gives us a foundation to build, build upon for future budget discussions. Back to my comment about the status quo. I've been here two years. You've been here a lot longer, many of you. I still have not met anyone who believes that the status quo is the standard to which the Ducksbury Public Schools should aspire. I actually think there's an expectation, and I would add a demand, actually, for us to provide a top-tier, first-class education for Ducksbury students. And the current level of resources, including this budget, and I would say our relative performance, isn't really commensurate with those expectations. Because of that, even though I have, again, we're in a good position of having this level services budget that's agreed upon, we have several unfunded needs in this budget. And I spend as much time in my budget presentations and documents talking about unfunded needs as I do about actually what's contained in the budget. I have this saying, I say it all the time, that because a need goes unfunded, doesn't mean the need has gone away. And I also say that I think it's really important for me and for us to articulate the district's needs, so that when resources do become available, there are no surprises. I, I think, I believe in that very strongly. Some of our unfunded needs, I'll touch upon them briefly. We simply put, do need additional staff to address some higher-than-desirable class sizes throughout the district. We have some of our middle school classes with 30-plus students in, in the, 30-plus students is not emblematic of a top-tier school district. It's something we need to change. We also have some layers, as I would describe it, of curricular and instructional support that I think are sorely needed to provide our students a true first-class, 21st-century education. Things like instructional technology coaches, things like elementary math specialists. We can't get them right now, but it's something we need to focus on if we're going to continue to grow, continue to expand. I'd also add, our students come to us with a lot of social and emotional needs, much more than any time in history. We need some support someplace to address those. In addition, we still have significant, a significant amount of user fees in the district. We charge for transportation. We charge for extracurricular activities. We charge for athletics. And as I say up here, we still charge for full-day kindergarten. And funding full-day kindergarten, in my opinion, really needs to be a priority for this district if, thank you. I wouldn't boo kindergartners, but I appreciate the sentiment. And finally, this budget does not allow for the development and expansion of new learning opportunities, you know, innovations, experiential, project-based learning opportunities. We're not quite able to do that right now. So I do just want to point out those unfunded needs. The question, and I think it's a fair one, and I put it up on the screen for you, why are there so many unfunded needs? And I think it's really important for us to put our budget in context, and I want to do that in the next couple of slides. I've always contended, and I've been a school administrator for about 22 years, always contended that communities, not just Ducksbury, should expect to see annual increases in School Department budgets in the range of 3% to 5%. As I say here, if the district is to maintain the quality of its programs and services, and really, I, I should add, just keep pace with the demands of a 21st-century public school system. As the slide shows, I would argue that 3%, that range, buys us status quo at best, and in some years, when some external pressures are upon us, that 3% could lead to a possible service reduction. And that happened two, two fiscal years ago here in Ducksbury. Now, there's a lot in between, as illustrated by that red arrow, but on the upper end, and I do realize it's an upper end, that 5% end, that is the exciting place for me. It allows for program advancement, program expansion, innovation. And so I'm not suggesting we're going to get there anytime soon, but I think it's, thank you, but I think it's, I think it's really important to talk about that. Now, the, the important question is why 3% to 5%? And that answer's on that second bullet, is that schools have costs, many, many costs, that are essentially fixed, or legally mandated, or simply unavoidable. And I want to provide some context for what I'm saying. These five categories are budget categories that, for the most part, are truly driven by contractual obligations or legal mandates, especially in the case of special education. In the last five years, the Ducksbury Public Schools budget has increased by an average of roughly 3%, a little below 3%. So to put that into perspective, these five categories alone, again, driven by contractual obligations and legal mandates, if we did nothing else in this year's budget but address those five categories, we would have had a 3.4% increase. Right? So right off the bat, we sort of have this structural deficit that causes challenges year after year. Doesn't mean we're doing anything wrong, it's just simply the realities of our system in this, in the structural deficit that we're in. So to be direct, the takeaway here that I'm asking you to take away is that when contractual obligations are compounded with these unpredictable or issues or legal mandates, it really is hard to keep pace with the demands. And anything less than 3%, again, in my opinion, which is the recent historical average, it really is, in effect, a mandate for service or quality reduction for the Ducksbury Public Schools. And I just think we need to be mindful of that. So moving on to, back to FY '20, I do believe the budget for FY '20 is very responsible, given the fiscal climate here in Ducksbury. I don't necessarily believe that it's in the very best interest of students. I, I really don't. My concern, and this is what keeps me up at night, is that we may be witnessing a slight erosion, a slow erosion of the quality of the Ducksbury Public Schools because of that challenge due to that structural deficit. And I just want to say that the success of the Ducksbury Public Schools, and it is a tremendously successful school system and an amazing place to work and an amazing place for our students, but that success over time didn't happen by chance. It happened because this community, you all in this room, valued public education and importantly, invested in public education. Right? It was not an accident that we are where we are today with this high-quality system. It happened because of very strategic and intentional investment in public education. So given that resources in town right now are in fact limited, no one's disputing that, we need to ask ourselves, what are our options? Before we do, I just want to say out loud and acknowledge that no matter what happens this year or the year after, our needs are not going away, and we need to acknowledge them. Today's public schools are more complex than ever, and our students require a level of service, a higher level of service, excuse me, than at any other time in history. Our schools have transformed from institutions that provided one-size-fits-all education into ones providing specialized instruction to a highly diverse group of learners. That is a shift. Today's schools must also focus on the increasingly complex social and emotional needs of our students. And really, in recent history, we have to attend to student safety and building security like never before. When I started in this business 22 years ago, we didn't have to talk about school safety and security. It's pervasive now and extremely important, but it is a It's pervasive now and extremely important, but it is a challenge. And finally, I just want to finish up by saying, schools are more accountable than ever to the state and federal government. We are not only, in my opinion, morally obligated to educate all students, but we're all now also legally obligated to provide for all students. And that's a promise that we, we need to stand by and I am going to keep. In short, the demands of our schools are different today than they were even five years ago, and our students' needs are different. And we just need to acknowledge that. Finally, town manager said basically the same thing I'm going to say, that any conversation about ways to adequately fund the Duxbury Public School budget and any town budget needs to be fully transparent, in my opinion, needs to play, take place in a public arena. I do share the opinion and the thought that we do need an infusion of resources in the Duxbury Public Schools, and if our current budget won't allow for it, we need to look at alternatives. And there is a, there is a mechanism, and that mechanism is to override Prop. 2.5. That is a decision that's much bigger than me. There is an actual cost to taxpayers, and we all, I think, sitting up here, certainly, I certainly do, understand the importance of engaging in dialogue with you all and listening to you all, listening to every stakeholder in town before we, before we make any decision. And with that, I will say thank you for giving me your time and your attention and for allowing me to advocate to our, for our students. We have a very, very special school system here in Duxbury, and I know, like you, I want to keep it that way. So thank you very much, have a great rest of the day.
Thank you, Dr. Antonucci. Mrs. Sullivan, I think we're now ready for the motion for Article Five, motion number two.
Subject: School operating budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $36,936,947 as the general fund school operating budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $36,783,247, and to transfer the sum of $153,700 from the PEG Access Fund to be expended under the direction of the school committee.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight-zero to recommend. I will read the, the lines. Line, "Schools," "Schools operating budget," line seventy-seven, "Salaries," $29,948,699. And this is listed because it has been here in previous years, the laptop lease expenses were zero.
Okay, I believe we have a hold, Mr. Zachman. It's yours?
I tried to convince myself not to come to town meeting this year. Unfortunately, my conscience won't let me, I don't know why. I'm going to vote no on this article. And the reason I'm going to vote no on this article, even though I know that there's no chance that it's not going to pass, is to indicate a preference. And my preference would be to be paying the, in my view, rather lavish salary that a superintendent of schools in Duxbury, Massachusetts gets paid these days. I would prefer to be paying it to a superintendent of schools who viewed his job as creating the environment for the best possible education for Duxbury students, given the resources available, rather than one who, in my view, appears to view his job as convincing the town of Duxbury that we should just spend lots more money. Somebody who would distinguish between the question of the quality of the education provided and measure it by something other than how much money we spend on it. Money which we learned earlier, a great deal of which is buried in the so-called share costs, that is in fact well over two-thirds of the total amount of money in town. I just don't see any reason why we should put up with continually having our pockets picked on the notion that if we don't spend lots more money, our kids are going to be dumb. I interview Duxbury High School students that are applying to college. They're getting a good education, there's no question about it, but we don't need to spend lots more money. We just have to use the money that we can make reasonably available without picking our pockets and making our taxes unaffordable for many of us, and have somebody running the schools who views that as his job, not as selling us on spending more.
I'm hoping this doesn't become a back and forth. Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Brezner.
Kelly Brezner, I'm chair of the Duxbury School Committee. I just want to say that, to me, was extremely offensive to Dr. Antonucci because he, with a background in finance and his background as a superintendent, his main point was we acknowledged the fact that there aren't unlimited funds this year, and that is why we put forth a level service budget. We didn't ask for anything more that we've gotten in the prior year. That's all I wanted to acknowledge.
Thank you. We've started to move off the topic of voting on this article, but I see we have one more comment in the back. Please.
Hi, Mark McDevitt, Chasson Street. I just am looking for an explanation on the expense line item, why there is such a large increase. I apologize if somebody already mentioned it, but, you know, I'm sort of curious, why is there such a dramatic increase in that specific line item when we are still carrying the, you know, laptop computers as a capital item that we're going to borrow money for?
So I believe you're talking about line item seventy-eight? Is that accurate? Okay. So...
Not sure I have a specific answer to the question. I mean, we have about four hundred line items in our budget document, it's forty or fifty pages worth. But let me just say, our expense budget, off the top of my head, is comprised of many things that, that are large-ticket items that have contractual obligations tied to them, such as our school bus contract, such as special education, other district tuitions, things like utilities, heat, electric, light, trying to think of other major categories off the top of my head. So I mean, I don't know if you have a specific question, but, you know, every single year our expense budget is going to rise as those contracts rise.
Just a follow-up, so I guess what you're saying is a $700,000 increase over last year's expense budget is typical?
My budget documents are broken up slightly different, but I, I mean, I don't, I don't question that number at all, so I would not say that's atypical. I'd be glad to share with you the details of the budget, again, it's voluminous, and we show line-by-line item progression of the increases. I'll be glad to share those with you afterwards, or they're available online for public consumption. But every one of our expenses in this budget, especially on the expense side, is articulated quite, quite visibly in our budget document.
Okay. Is there something else you wanted to say, Dr.? Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask or vote on motion three, on motion number two, the school budget. Voting is open. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed and the budget passes one-hundred-and-fifty-five to fifty-five. We now have motion, motion number three, which is more of a parliamentary move than anything else. This will be a motion that summarizes and finalizes the last two votes that you took. You may remember, when we started this discussion, I said that until we had a, a final vote on these two items, it would be open to reconsideration between all the line items. So, Mrs. Sullivan, may we have motion, motion number three?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $78,872,850 as the operating budget of the town for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, exclusive of the water department and the water department debt service for the purposes and in the amounts specified in the motions previously voted under this Article Five. And to meet this appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $77,726,808, and transfer the sum of $1,145,277 in accordance with the transfers voted in motions previously voted under this Article Five.
Second.
Motion one, general fund, total appropriation, four million, forty-one million, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-one-thirty-eight. Motion two, school budget, thirty-six million, nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars.
This just memorializes what we've done in the last two motions that we've taken, so I don't really see any questions that would come up with this, and sensing there are no debate to be had, I'm going to ask or vote. Voting is now open. One for yes, two for no. Voting is closed, the motion passes one-hundred-and-sixty-one to thirty-five. We have one more motion under Article Five, which is for the Water Enterprise Fund. Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a motion for the Water Enterprise Fund?
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,586,892 from the Water Enterprise Fund revenue for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and further, that $116,123 be raised from Water Enterprise Fund revenue to fund indirect costs associated with the Water Enterprise Fund appropriated in the general fund as identified in Article Five, motion one, to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Finance committee voted eight-zero to recommend. Operating budget water, line ninety-two, salaries, $795,606. Expenses, line ninety-three, $1,198,650. Debt service water, line ninety-four, principal payments, $473,982. Line ninety-five, interest on bonded debt, $98,654. Interest on temporary notes, $10,000. Bond expense, $10,000.
Are there any questions or comments about, any questions or comments about the Water Enterprise Fund? Seeing none, I'll entertain them. Now, I'm going to suggest now we vote. Voting is now open. One for yes, two for no. This is the vote for the Water Enterprise Fund. Voting is closed and it passes one-hundred-and-sixty-six to nineteen. So we now have an operating budget for 2020. It's quarter twelve. The next article is Article Six, which is the capital budget. I guess I'm looking for some sense of whether people would like to stop for lunch now or work their way through. Keep going, okay. Keep going seems to be, seems to be popular. We're going to deal with Article Number Six. We will have a presentation from Alex Chin about the capital budget. When we actually vote on the, when we actually vote on the budget, we'll be using numbers that were in a yellow handout that was outside on the table. There's some, there are some differences in votes from what was printed in the warrant that it was distributed originally. So if you want to follow along, you can either get the yellow sheets or follow what will be up on the, up on the screen. Mr. Chin, if you'll start with your report, then we'll move on to, on to the motions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Alex Chin from the Fiscal Advisory Committee, and I'm going to sort of take you through how we sort of think about capital and long-range funding for the town. But first, I'd like to thank all the department heads who are sitting to my left. We have spirited conversations back and forth, and I appreciate all of your efforts during the budgeting process, and especially John Q. has been a huge resource to our, our town and our committee for, for this year and, and the budgeting process. Next slide. So the agenda will be the makeup of the committee, the capital budget process, the decision-making process, go through the, the FY '20 budget, sort of what keeps us up at night, and then an example of what additional debt would look like to the taxpayers. Next slide, please. We are a nine-member committee appointed by the town moderator. We advise the selectmen, the town manager, the finance director, the finance committee, and town meeting on strategic planning and long-range fiscal management. We make recommendations with regard to overall financial management, including capital expenditures and the use of borrowed funds. We approve the capital requests and are cognizant of the long-term effects of the decisions we make and the recommendations we make. Next slide. Overall, fiscal advisory's goal is to prioritize all requests, determine the projects and make recommendations for funding. The fact that we didn't approve something doesn't mean that it wasn't important, because many of these requests come, come back year after year. And each year, there are always new requests that come up that sort of seem to come out of nowhere sometimes. Next slide. The, in the fiscal policies that were approved by the selectmen last year, the definition of capital is anything over 25,000. That has a life of more than five years, and typically, we try to spend between two and five percent of the estimated tax levy on capital projects during the year. Next slide is, how do we pay for these things? Typically, we pay for them out of free cash. We try to use forty to sixty percent of free cash to spend on capital each year. Annually, the town will strive to generate between three and five percent of free cash. We look for grants and other earmarks to fund spending. We use retained earnings from enterprise accounts, and as a sort of a last resort, there's borrowing both under the levy and on top of the levy. One new thing that you'll hear this year is during Article Fifteen, there's a new, we're going to try to establish a capital improvement stabilization fund. This will allow us to carry, this will be a savings account for capital expenditures so that we can get rid of some of the fluctuations that happen from year to year. Other items that come into the decision process, do we have enough money to pay for a project this year? How do requests fit into the town's long, long-term plans with regard to overall financial management? Will we have adequate future revenues to meet future needs? How can the town prepare for future unknowns? We look at, debt is a, one of the things that's sort of top of mind, so we look at what the current... the current debt situation looks like for Duck Spray, and the, my laser pointer, we look at debt service and what's rolling off from year to year. In the next five years, there'll be three projects rolling off, which total about eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand dollars in annual debt service. One thing, the other thing we sort of considered, and just want to sort of give you an update on, the biggest dollar-wise assets in the town are the buildings, and we have done a good job, you know, hiring a facilities manager who is maintaining these buildings, so we don't have some of these big surprises going forward. The breakdown of Brian's budget, we discussed earlier in the operations, but in addition, he spends about three to four-hundred-thousand dollars annually in capital. This slide is an update on sort of the cash positions of the town so that we can make sort of informed decisions. You know, we look at free cash, the retirement fund, stabilization fund balances, and the Water Enterprise Fund. To the twenty-twenty budget, the Water Enterprise Fund, the request totaled just over four-million dollars this year. Fiscal advisory approved just over three-million dollars. The projects, as you'll see, will be the PCE, main pipe replacement, generators for wells, system master plan, and annual system rehabilitation. The funding sources will be retained earnings and borrowing. In Article Six, the request this year totaled just under four million. We approved about two-point-two with the funding sources of free cash, levy capacity, water improvement funds, peg access funds, ambulance fund, and borrowing. Other things that we considered in this year's budget is capital that's spent in other articles. So, we approved two during the special town meeting, and in addition to Article Six, there'll be Articles thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then the CPC articles, which are thirty-two through thirty-seven. What keeps us up at night? A lot of things. A new DPW facility, seawall, the bridge, extending water service to the rest of town. There's about ten percent of the town that does not have town water. Turf fields and other major rehabs and unknowns. This is just an example of what a twenty-million-dollar debt would look like for the taxpayers. On the median and the average home, it's about, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars on your tax bill annually. We have some recommendations for the future, things that we are looking at. We'd like to understand, and people have brought up the issue, we'd like to understand how the town manages the fleet. Where are these cars? How many are there? How many vehicles do we have? And, and, and get our, get our arms around, are we, are we replacing these on the right cadence? We'd like to understand, you know, how do we provide existing services when the costs are outpacing revenues? We'd like to, you know, get our arms around, you know, better strategic planning and benchmarking to understand service needs and costs. Capital proposals, you know, we'd like to have a little more refined process on how we see these, when we see these, and just increased communication. We'd like to ensure processes in place so that long-term budgeting is consistent across all town departments. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chin, I thank you, and we're about to find out if brevity is rewarded. Just a couple of procedural notes, and I'll make this quick in Article Six. It is the Capital Budget for the town. The figures are either on the yellow handout that you may have picked up, or they start on page twenty-four through twenty-six in the warrant. Article Six is going to be divided into five separate motions. Finance Committee Chair will move each of these motions, and we will discuss and vote on each of them separately. Unlike Article Five, however, each of these motions under Article Six will be final votes. We are in effect dividing the question. We will not vote a grand total at the end of Article Six. And this is a procedure that we have followed for some years, so I suspect it is familiar to many people. So, Mrs. Sullivan, may we now have a motion under Article Six for General Government Capital Budget?
I move that the town appropriate the sum of one-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, nineteen dollars as the general government capital budget of the town for the purposes and in the amounts specified as follows. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, transfer one-million-fourty-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, of which nine-hundred-and-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars shall come from free cash, a hundred thousand shall come from the ambulance receipts, and forty-five thousand shall come from the Waterways Improvement Receipts Fund to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Finance Committee voted seven-zero to recommend. General Government, Town Clerk, one, Records Management System, thirty thousand. Facilities Management, two, Chandler HVAC Modernization, one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. Number three, Harbor Master HQ Rehab, twenty thousand. Number four, Public Restroom Rehab, nineteen thousand. Police Station HVAC, line five, Implement Engineering Recommendations, two-hundred-thousand. Public Safety Police, line six, Parking Lot Expansion, twenty-five thousand. Line seven, Police Deputy Chief Command Vehicle, forty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-nine dollars.
Is that a hold? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did I read it wrong? CCTV Upgrade Replacement, thirty-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Fire Ambulance, three-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. Municipal Services, Replace Vehicle, twenty-eight thousand. Harbor Master, two-hundred-and-twelve Patrol Vehicle, one-ninety, forty-five thousand. Public Safety, oh, sorry, Public Works. Land and Natural Resources, Replace Truck, twenty-nine, forty-four-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five. Highway, Replace Truck, eighteen, two-hundred-and-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Transfer Station, Replace, nineteen-ninety, Steadco Ejector Trailer DX dash six, ninety-six-thousand, six-hundred dollars. Crematory, Complete Rebuild of Retorts Units A, B, C, and D, three-hundred-thousand. Percy Walker Pool, New Starting Blocks, ten thousand.
Is that a?
Duck Spray Schools.
Was, was there a hold on the starting blocks? Thank you.
Is there, I'm sorry, I did not hear you. I apologize. Then why is it here? Okay. Mr. Tuffy, I'm reading from the yellow handout because I, I believe that was the appropriate thing to read. Is, is this not correct?
The numbers in the yellow sheet are correct. However, the motion that the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen have contains different information. The crematory should not have been in that motion, because that motion will be coming later.
Okay.
So, if you could just strike that, it'll be perfect.
Mr. Reed, could I ask you to share that with the rest of us?
Share that with the room, please.
Thank you.
Guess what, guys? We've got some exciting stuff happening up here.
Exciting may overstate it, but important.
Right.
Whatevs.
The way the motions are broken out is they, there are different, different sections of the Capital Budget. The motion that Mrs. Sullivan read added one line that's going to actually come up later in a separate motion for the same article, and that one extra line had to do with the crematory. So, that will actually be contemplated in either the third or fourth motion down the line in the Capital Budget. So, my recommendation would be just to strike that single line, that crematory, because we'll be dealing with it, I think, in Motion Three or Four.
Okay. So, we're done after starting blocks for motion number one.
So, for clarity's sake, the three-hundred-thousand dollars that was talk-
Striking line fifteen, which would be complete rebuild of retort units A, B, C, and D for three-hundred-thousand, to be discussed later in the meeting.
Okay.
Do you want a second, Ed?
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
Sorry about that, guys.
The very first hold that I have has to do with the Police Station HVAC Implement Engineering Recommendations, line number five. Please.
Lester Lloyd, Twenty-One Washington Street. Could you just explain to us what the character of that expense is? That is, is it ductwork? Is it HVAC units? Is it engineering costs? And second, are there measures planned to recoup those costs if, in fact, there were problems in the original design of the system?
Mr. Cherry, do you have an answer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Cherry, Facilities Director. So, we've had a few issues at the Police Station, and this is a two-pronged approach. The engineering, we already paid for via a reserve fund transfer in the early September range, but this is for HVAC and some waterproofing implementations at the Police Station. And your second question, we are looking to recoup with the waterproofing via some warranty issues that we're having with some expansion joints and other things, so it's, it's those two.
If I may, so what portion of the two-hundred-thousand is waterproofing?
It's about, about twenty-two thousand.
So, could you describe the problems with the HVAC that lead to the one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar expenditure?
Sure, sure. So, we have a unique circumstance at the Police Station. Given, given the nature of the building and the fact that it is a police station, it's, it's very tight, and a lot of what Mass Save and other initiatives that were taken on over insulated the building in some areas, in my opinion. The heat pump system that we have in there, everything that was specified is, is operating as designed. The problem is, is that the building really struggles in extreme weather circumstances. The summer, anywhere from, say, May through Labor Day, or even into late September. The building is just not able to overcome those external forces, and we're looking to supplement the existing building systems with the outlined dehumidification units. The rest of the balance includes two seven-and-a-half-ton rooftop units, all the sheet metal insulation, roof ductwork, air balancing, complete recommissioning of the existing system, and all the piping and engineering and stamping associated with it.
So, if I understand correctly, in the summer, although the building is over insulated, which would lead one to think it doesn't get warmer from summer heat, there wasn't sufficient air conditioning to provide for summer heat loads.
Right. Well, what you have is, is you have CO sensors, and based on occupancy, we're, we're bringing in outside air, even when outside air isn't something that you want to bring in in a building. There, there really is limited control with that, so we're, we're bringing in outside air untreated to, you know, accommodate our requirements on air quality. But again, the existing system, we can make any temperature in the building at any time, extreme heat, extreme cold, we can make any temperature we want, but we're not able to extract that humidity, which is causing secondary issues in the building, and it's very significant. And in my opinion, we need to do this work in order to make the building last fifty-plus years like you'd expect it to.
So, if I may, it sounds like you're saying there weren't really design errors because the outside air being brought in matches required outside air intakes under state codes and guidelines, but because the building was so, is so tightly built, there isn't enough air interchange that, in fact, CO2 levels are rising above what's acceptable, and you have to bring in more outside air. And this was, is not something that the design team would have foreseen under normal circumstances. Is that correct?
Correct.
And therefore, you're not going back to the design team for the one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we're not going to, but on the waterproofing end of things, we are, because we, we've seen some premature sealing in the caulk joints and the, and the CMU siding. So, we're going to reseal the entire building on the outside perimeter, all exterior caulk joints, and then we're going to bring that seal down two feet below grade and ensure that we get that, eliminate that as one of the contributing factors to the humidity.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe the next hold was?
Ms. Moderator?
Oh, I'm sorry. Shoot.
Joanne Kingsley, Laughter Drive. I have some concerns that you had all these consultants do these designs of these buildings, and we've paid for this. Now, we're having all these multiple problems in parking and all these other costs. This seems like redundant to the taxpayers to keep paying for errors that were made by your consultants or your designs and your, your mass save, your heat. This is not really something that consumers should be constantly paying for in this town when things are done improperly.
Yeah, great question.
Thank you.
I, I agree, and I think, I don't know that I would extrapolate that as much as maybe you have, but in this instance, you know, I would agree with you, but at the same time, you know, there's modifications made at every facility, at every project, no matter what it is. And once you, you don't really know what you're up against until you move in, and we like to hold people accountable, you know, whether it's the senior center or any other project that we're building. It's just that, you know, the lines are drawn where they are, and we need to move forward and, and preserve this asset and be able to, you know, bring you guys, you know, the building you expect for the investment that you made.
Chief Clancy.
On this topic, I just want to speak to the need. We understand that, you know, what's been going on, so we've been dealing with this issue about four to five months after we moved into the building, and we have been working with Inspeccional Services and, and Facilities Department, and this has been examined. There's a number of different engineers have come in. This has been a long process trying to dial into what exactly is going on, but for me, I have to speak for my employees. We've had a couple of mold remediation projects already in this station. Our, our printers jam up because it's so moist in the building, the paper is all moist. Imagery on the walls are wrinkled, but at the end of the day, you know, there's men and women working twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year in this building, and we have to deal with this moisture because it's a, you know, ultimately, you're looking at it, eventually, if we don't, then we're going to have health issues, and that's the last thing we want. So, let's, I ask you to, let's, we got to get this done. Let's get this done, and, you know, folks are absolutely looking at the potential of recovery down the road, but we can't wait. You know, people are working in that building. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
How old is this building? And we all work, some of us do work 24/7 jobs, 365 days a year. So I understand the health concerns, but I also understand that we're paying the taxes for something that you had consultants, designers spent a lot of money doing. Now we're taking the burden of what was done wrong. I don't know who those consultants were, their reputations or whatever, but it should not be up to the town people to pay for all the errors that were made, and that's the problem. My understanding this building is what, less than four years old?
Six.
Six, okay. Six years old, and we're having all these problems. I cannot imagine what will happen in 10 years, because this is not going to correct with just this. This is a multiple problem thing that's going to cascade down, because obviously, there's a lot more problems that will be uncovered later. And that is a concern, that we keep paying for buildings, that you have all these consultants that you pay a lot of money for to do, and then, oh, now we don't have the parking spaces, we don't have HVAC system, we have this. Every single time you do something, we're having all these problems. But you're not, we're the ones footing the bill, and that's a problem. This is not progressing, I understand for the health, but it's not our responsibility to keep paying for errors that are made.
Yeah. Well, we've built about seven buildings, you know, recently, so I've been on all the committees. We've built about five to seven buildings in the last 10 years, and I just disagree with the fact that this is something that's a stomach and widespread. We've been working on this issue for the past two or three years, and, you know, it's our responsibility to bring it to you, and that's what we're trying to do. And I don't see how it's tied to the parking. It's just a separate situation based on events and things of that nature, but it's not great news, and I agree with you, but I can, I can say, from the building's perspective, there is nothing else that we're going to be bringing forward of significance from construction moving forward. But this is a significant one, and we need to get it done.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on?
Can I ask one final question on this?
One final question.
Are any of the repairs that are, there were two things mentioned, the HVAC, but then there was also some waterproofing or something else touched on. Is any of these repairs that we're looking to borrow money for, which is very important, are any of those repairs a result of the flood and the sewer backup that we all read about in the last year?
No. No, that was--
The answer was no. Thank you.
No.
We're on to the, on to the--
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, actually, the hold punch is right through that number. I can't make it out, but it's the Police Deputy Chief Command Vehicle, $46,509. There was a hold.
Lester Lloyd, 21 Washington. I'm glad to hear that the Fiscal Advisory Committee is planning on reviewing vehicle expenditures in general, as I know we've talked about in previous town meetings. I just want to emphasize how urgent that feels in view of these expenditures listed here for all of these vehicles that are shown, and I wondered if the Advisory Committee could give us any insight into these particular expenditures in terms of how they fit into the overall coming plan.
And who's going to speak to that? Mr. Holden from the Fiscal Advisory Committee will be here to talk about--
Thank you very much, Frank Holden, Fiscal Advisory Committee. I'm new on the committee, but I'm old. So, and I've been in budgeting circumstances that are mirror reflections of the ones we're facing, and I'm here on behalf of the Fiscal Advisory Committee, as well as taking some load off of the Finance Committee with regards to the way in which the town asks for resources to replace or replace or purchase new vehicles. We put a hold on, in fact, we didn't support line 10, and we didn't support line 12, which is a total of around $66,000. The town's fleet is represented in part by the accounting records that display how many vehicles we have, who owns them, who operates them, why they're operated, who takes them home, how much they cost at the beginning when they were purchased, and the insurance costs associated with them, which is a pretty, a pretty effective record of the vehicles. When we get a request, we got 17 requests out of 50 in the original capital budget proposal for vehicles. And after buildings, the vehicles represent somewhat over $11 million worth of capital assets to the town. So we think this is a very serious, very important issue to drill down on at levels that we can help with making decisions. So we've, we're going to partner with the Finance Committee to set up a group to work with the town officials to develop a fleet management concept that will allow better information at the decision-making levels. In the meantime, we are not in support of the $28,000 vehicle, primarily because it was proposed to us as a vehicle to be added to the fleet, which is a no-no from get-go's. The second vehicle we didn't support was line 12, which is a $44,000 vehicle that originally was proposed to be an addition to the fleet, but on subsequent information, sounds like that the proposal will say, no, we'll replace this vehicle. We did look at the police chief's deputy chief vehicle and had some questions about that. But we're looking to improve the decision-making process on vehicles and would propose that if you are in agreement with us that you, with the advice of the town moderator, figure out how to take some of these costs out of the proposed budget. Thank you.
A clarification for which of the vehicles and which line item was the Fiscal Advisory not recommend, not recommending?
Mr. Holden.
Item 10, replace vehicle, that was the $28,000, and you guys did not support that expenditure? Is that, okay, thank you, but that is part of the total number that we're voting on? Could I move to make an amendment?
Mrs. McNabb, could I wait till we get to that line item? I'd like to dispose of, are we done with line item number seven?
No, we have nothing to talk to. Fiscal Advisory, at a recent meeting, voted to support line seven, the Police Deputy Chief Command Vehicle. After not approving it in previous meetings, we went back, talked to the chief, talked to people. The car is in pretty tough shape. It's part of the chief's normal cadence, and the vehicle is coming out of service. It's going to get traded in, and it's not an add-to-fleet. It was a safety decision, and that's why the Fiscal Advisory supported it.
Mr. Moderator?
Chief.
Just as there's a, I just want to speak to that there's maybe a little bit of a misnomer, is we're not sort of just winging these vehicle purchases. The Police Department, eight years ago, worked with the Finance Committee, and we brought to you a fleet management plan, not just in the cycle for which we replaced the cars, but also in the manner in which we use the cars, and we dramatically changed how the vehicles were being used on a day-to-day basis. That sort of took a little bit of the pressure off of those vehicles to get us a little longer lifespan, a usable lifespan. The result of that, the following year, I can tell you that a certain amount of money left the police budget when we consolidated vehicle maintenance services. The following year, once we, just one year into implementing the new replacement and new management plan at the Police Department, that money went to the DPW, that, those costs were slashed in half the first year. We do take this very seriously, because it's a, it's a, it's a cost that we know, that it's borne by you folks. In our business in particular, that's what we do. We, you know, the police mission, part of that patrol mission, is the omnipresence. It's just, is driving and being out there. We have these, so we have to have these vehicles. In our replacement system now, it's always one in, one out. If we are adding a car to the fleet, you know about it when we're, when we are proposing that kind of a vehicle. The capital vehicles that you see from the Police Department are vehicles that the town has determined aren't operating. I've always disagreed with that, because frankly, it's very rare for us to get five years out of any vehicle. But there are certain cars that we will come to capital, because that's the only mechanism for us to get the replacement. Patrol cars are considered operational costs, and we buy three a year, and those get, we cycle those through under our management plan. So you're going to see the Police Department is aggravating and frustrating, and it could be a time to say, oh, looking for another car. We have about four or five vehicles that have to be replaced under the, under this capital program, which means I'm going to be here every year for a car. But we're following the management plan that we have in place, we have for quite some time, and it's, it absolutely has been a successful, cost-effective program. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McNabb, I believe we're now up to article number, line item 10.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to make an amendment to Article 6 to remove the $28,000 proposed amount for that vehicle as reasons for this motion to amend. It is the Fiscal Advisory's opinion that this is a, an additional vehicle instead of a replacement vehicle.
Okay, I think that's pretty clear. You wish to make that a zero.
Correct.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded. Does anybody wish to speak to it?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Mangione will speak for Finance.
Well, Mr. Mangione first, and then we'll see who else wants to speak to it.
I apologize for not getting up to the podium, but unfortunately, due to certain illnesses, my ability to stand for a long period of time has been reduced. We let Scott Lambie, our Special Services Director, speak to this car. It's a vehicle for him. As you may or may not know, the state is to adopt a new policy with regard to green vehicles. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, the state is adopting a new policy with regard to vehicles, and what we have done in the past, very often, is hand down certain vehicles which now probably cannot be handed down to other departments and will have to be eliminated. In this particular case, Mr. Lambie, he can speak to it. He's laid out the cost and the operation of this particular vehicle, costing us to repair it, higher gas mileage, I'm sorry, lower gas mileage, and he's replacing it with a vehicle that will have higher gas mileage, be more efficient to operate, et cetera. Yes, vehicles do get to be a problem. They are all getting expensive, and Frank Holden is correct. The Fiscal Advisory Committee has started working on, looking at vehicles in general. We have been talking about it. We will hope to have a combined effort to bring forth a policy, but more importantly, do a little more work, maybe working on these vehicles from the standpoint of doing a little more. We have been lengthening the life of the vehicles. I give kudos to the Department of Public Works. They're lengthening the vehicles of trucks, we're getting good repair, we're buying good quality equipment, we've standardized equipment in the fleet. They were trying to buy through Peter Buttigess's suggestions the same kind of vehicles that they've had good luck with, so we're doing our best to do it. But once again, a never, never-ending problem, and certainly, we are going to put our efforts to it. But our feeling was, and I'll let Scott speak to the vehicle, because I don't drive it, and he will tell you that it's a hand-me-down vehicle that he has done, it's going to be traded in, there will be some value coming back off the $28,000, and I will let Scott speak to that. That's it, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lambie, why don't you come on down and speak from the podium?
Scott Lambie, Director of Municipal Services. This is a replacement vehicle. This is not meant to be adding anything to the fleet. The current vehicle is 10 years old, close to 90,000 miles. It was a hand-me-down vehicle from a line car from the Police Department. It was also subject to a recall at one point for leaking emissions. The check engine light pretty much never goes off. But all that, all that being said, this town meeting accepted and became part of the Green Communities Act, a couple, or last town meeting or the town meeting before, part of that required us to adopt a fuel-efficient vehicle policy. So we're no longer allowed to hand down the line cruisers, the cars like that, into other departments. And so any non-administrative or non-exempt, or administrative or non-exempt vehicles have to fall in line with these new policies. They're something that we adopted, it requires getting more fuel-efficient vehicles. So, and that was the intent of this, was just to replace this aging vehicle with something more fuel-efficient and in line with the policies.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? So we have, we have a motion, we have an amendment to the motion that's been made and seconded. It's pretty clear, if you vote in favor of the amendment, we will be taking the $28,000 out for the purchase of the vehicle. If you vote no, we will keep it in. Does that make sense? Okay. So I'll call for a vote now. All those in favor of the amendment of removing the vehicle, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is now open. Voting is closed, and the amendment fails. 96 yes and 114 no. So, so the vehicle stays in the budget. I believe the next, next item that was questioned was the replacement truck, item number 12 or line item 12, although I think before we do that, Mrs. Sullivan had a, had a correction she wanted to make.
Yes. Due to the fact that I was reading the handout as opposed to the motions book, line seven, the CCTV upgrade replacement, the correct number that should have been read is $37,890. Line eight, what did I say? See, I can't get this right to save my life. So if you look under Public Safety, line eight, CCTV upgrade replacement, $37,890. Sorry for that.
Thank you. I think we've got that. Okay, the replacement truck, there was a hold on that.
Remove the hold.
So, so it will stay in the budget then? Thank you. Crematory, we will deal with in another, in another motion later on. I apologize for the confusion. That brings us to the purchase, new starting block for the Percy Walker pool, line item 16. I think that was Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I'm sorry for beating this dead horse, and I did appreciate your--
That's what town meetings is, is here for you to question concerns. That's fine.
I did appreciate your comments, Mrs. Sullivan, earlier about the pool and understanding that it was a gift, and, and sometimes there's a bigger benefit. However, I was part of town meeting and part of the discussion back when we appropriated the funds to rehab the pool facility, and, and there was a group of people that very much convinced us that it would at least pay for itself. And that is really the vein in which I approach the pool, is that it should at least pay for itself. So to, again, not only have it losing money, but to borrow money to replace starting blocks just seems like a bad practice, guys.
So I'll just respond. So the towns are borrowing money for this. This--
this project came, uh, actually from the Duxbury School Department, um, coaches. And this project is going to be about a 25, $30,000 project, depending on bids. There's three pots of money, so to speak, that are being, um, raised for this. This is the first part. We also received a, um, a grant from the Ellison Fund of $10,000, uh, just under 10, so we'll be using that money if it's, it's supportive. Then the last third was the school department's coaches, um, swim team and swim booster organizations have agreed to fund the, the remaining. And I, and I haven't had a conversation with the two swim team coaches very recently. They're, they're very close to being, ha, having all of that money in hand. So we're hoping the town meeting will, uh, approve this last bit. This, uh, piece of equipment is used, um, in the starting blocks for all the swim meets that we have. We have, uh, seven different swim teams that swim there, not just Duxbury High School. Um, it, there's current starting blocks are 15 years old and, uh, they get quite a beating. So it's, it's really almost, uh, in some respects, a safety issue, um, where we need to replace these so the kids aren't standing up three feet high and, uh, and falling off them. So again, we're doing, this is a partnership with some town funds, a grant from Ellison's, which we've already, uh, acquired, and then fundraising from the school's swim team. So we hope you can support this.
And just to clarify, the, the money, the $10,000 is not part of a borrowed amount?
Miss-
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, is, is that yes or no? Is it part of the, is it to be borrowed?
No, the answer is no. The only borrowing for any of these capital outliers is in motion three, okay? Not in motion one or two.
Okay, I think that answers all of the questions. Um, and I believe the motion as originally presented stands. Is it accurate, Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Is the, is the motion that, is the motion-
As presented is, is the motion that people are voting on. Okay.
Yes.
Uh, this is a majority vote. Um, I think we've, we've talked about it and ready to, to vote on it. So I'm going to call for a vote right now. Uh, the voting is open. One for yes, two for no. Voting is closed and, and the motion passes 176 to 37. Mrs. Sullivan, how about a motion for, uh-
School cap-
Motion two for school capital budget.
Motion two, school capital budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $253,518 as the school capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $98,213 from the PEG access receipts and transfer $155,305 from free cash to be expended under the direction of the school committee.
Second.
Finance committee voted seven zero to recommend. Uh, line 18 under Duxbury Schools, replacement of backup and disaster recovery equipment, $58,745. Line 19, tree removal on the steel campus, $45,000. Okey doke? Pardon me? Oh, sorry. Line 20, um, to add a card, access to exterior doors at Chandler, $30,305. Line 21, security film on doors and windows, $30,000. Line 22, Chandler School Cubbies, this is year two of a two-year project, $50,000. Um, line 23, VGA cabling to HDMI cabling, $39,468. Um, there was a request for, um, six smartboard projectors, which, uh, has a line of zero, and that is it.
Mr. Moderator, a question. There seems to be a difference between the handed-out of motions and the yellow. Item 17 seems to be missing, which is the Chromebooks.
It's in motion three. That's where the borrowing went. This was just, I think we were, I have no idea where the yellow sheet came from. It's my nemesis. I don't like it. Next.
So we had a hold on, on line item 19, tree removal at the steel campus?
I would like to ask if all the trees being cut are dead trees. I don't recall any trees threatening the steel building, and I don't recall large dead trees around the area.
Well, we'll see if we can't get you an answer. Mr. Cherry, you're a frequent visitor down here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Cherry, Facilities Director. So we were approached about 18 months ago by our in-house certified arborists that we have significant amounts of trees. And, and the areas we're talking about, three property lines, really. We're, we're talking about the steel campus, right? The, the Pine Hill Ave property line. This is all in front of the building, between the building and St. George. So it's the Pine Hill property line along that fence. It's in front of the, the, uh, St. George along the stone wall, and then it's on in a Butters property as you head in on the right side of the campus, right before you take the right to the tennis courts. So everything in front. And, uh, but they said to us, as they approached us and said that we have pretty much all of these trees are, um, either in severe forms of decay or are dying or dead. And, um, we've seen nothing but, um, that play out over the last two years. We have limbs falling almost weekly. Um, we had another, uh, we went out and hired another independent arborist, um, to get a second opinion and they were in agreement. So this, this calls for the removal of all those trees, uh, and they're going to be grinded below grade, and, um, it's going to eliminate the threat, and, uh, it's something that we should do. They're not historic trees. Um, some people have brought that up, uh, but they are, um, they are a high risk. Uh, the kids walk through, um, on that brick road. They go underneath them every day, the juniors and seniors coming over from the steel parking lot, going to PE, cutting through the fields every day, um, in athletics and all that. So, um, it's a need and, um, that's it.
That's all right. I just want to remind the department that, um, large overstory hardwood trees are mitigate our global warming and give shelter to those properties. You say on the edge, they, um, don't have any shelter from the open space in the car, huge car parking lot. And in the future, I would hope that they could replant with young hardwood overstory trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sheehan, I know, wanted to speak and I believe somebody popped up out back. We'll go to them before we do anything else.
Hi, Susanna Sheehan, Powderpoint Avenue. That was my question. It sounds like you're clear-cutting every tree on the steel campus. I understand a lot of them are dead. I also understand a lot of them could have been pruned, and, um, I want to know if there's going to be anything planted in their place, especially along St. George Street, because it's going to look barren with a clear cut. I'm especially upset about the large beech tree on the right-hand side because I do not think that is dead, nor do I think it poses a, a threat to any students or cars. Thank you.
Do you have any, Mr. Cherry, do you have anything else to add or have you said it all?
So a number of trees were planted during construction, um, and we are planning on putting more trees in. Um, the problem is, is that, you know, on the Pine Hill side, all those trees are leaning into the neighbors' yards, right? They, they all have no bark on them. Their, their limbs are breaking off almost daily, and every time we have a storm, it's falling into the Pine Hill Ave, uh, Butters yards. And the same thing on the other side with the other gentleman. Um, they're falling into his yard almost every storm. And I know that, um, one of the trees, one of the significant big trees on that right side is, you know, now considered an invasive species and can't even be, um, planted in this state or the country for that matter. So, again, we've had two separate independent arborists, one internal, one third party, our DPW director, and a whole host of others, uh, you know, on board with this. And we're going to keep planting more trees. Don't worry.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, it sounds like there's enough concern here, um, especially about the beech tree that I didn't hear you, uh, say is going to be saved, um, as well as there could be a, a possibility of pruning some trees as, as opposed to, uh, taking them down. So in light of that, I would like to, um, move that we remove this item, number 19, from this article.
Do I have a second? I'll take, I take that as an amendment. Do I have a second? We have a second. So just to be clear, the, the amendment will be to remove the $45,000 funding for the tree removal on the steel campus, which is line item number 19.
And, and if, Mr. Moderator, if I could just speak quickly to this, I, I'm not, you know, it, it may very well at the end of the day be that those trees come down, but I think that there is a significant, um, want here in the room to at least further investigate, have some type of a public forum in which people can weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan, do you wish to be heard?
Um, I'm, I'm concerned that, um, although there's, there's, I hate cutting down trees, um, but I am concerned that if, um, there are some of these trees that do pose a hazard, and I think that, that, um, Brian has made that argument, that maybe not for 100% of the trees, but that some of these trees are a concern. By eliminating the 45,000, what you are, in a sense, doing, you are eliminating our ability to deal with any of these trees for the next year, throughout the balance of this year's, um, storm season, hurricane season, until we meet again, and then down through, um, July 1st of 2020. So I would, um, I would ask that the folks that are in charge of this respect the wishes of town meeting for those trees to be saved if and at all possible, but to please leave them the ability to take care of this as a public safety issue.
I, I understand that, Mrs. Sullivan, but we do have a tree department in town and, and certainly we have the ability to prune and, and, uh, remove any trees that were dead and obviously a, a danger factor.
Well, if that were the case and there was adequate resources, this article would not be, this would not be an article being presented. So I'm, I, I'm just concerned that if there are some trees where limbs are going to fall and you're going to have damage to, you know, at the best, private property, and at the worst, harm to, to somebody that is there, that we leave them the ability to react. Thank you.
Mrs. Sheehan, I'm, I'm guessing you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just, just briefly. I didn't hear an answer to my question about if the trees, um, on St. George Street in front of the stone wall will be replaced or there'll be absolutely nothing there. Um, to me aesthetically, that's pretty damn ugly. Thank you.
Mr. Cherry, do you know if the, if the plan is, and, and we're talking about the trees that, that, um, are between the street and the stone wall, or between the stone wall and the front of the old, where the old school was?
Right. We're, we're talking between the street and right, right inside the stone wall before the fields.
Okay.
Um, there, we are going to plant more trees, but we have to wait and see what it looks like, um, once they finish and where the opportunities are. Um, we've been, we've been, um, some local groups in town have reached out to us as far as participating and, um, you know, but we're not going to be, if there's a tree that's alive, we're not cutting it down. Um, some trees can't be trimmed because of the nature of the fact when a branch breaks off and it grows in a different, you know, tangential direction, then it's a threat to itself. Um, so again, we have internal arborists certified, more than one, and third party, and, um, you know, we're not going to leave it a desert. Um, you know, we're going to do something tasteful and, and we'll certainly be adding trees.
Thank you. I think we've, I think we've had a pretty thorough airing of, of this. So I'm going to call for a vote at this point. If you are in favor of, of removing the money from the budget, you're going to vote yes on this question. If you're opposed to removing the money, you're going to vote no. Um, voting is open. Uh, one for yes, two for no. And the motion fails to carry, 75 yes, 147 no. Mrs. Sullivan, Article Six, motion, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm getting ahead of myself. I guess that's wishful thinking. Um, so now we will, now we will vote on the main motion, um, which, which is motion number two. Can we put that back up on the screen? There we are. I think we're all clear on, on what it was, and in the end, we have made no changes to the motion as originally presented. I'll call for a vote now. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. The motion carries 179 to 40. Mrs. Sullivan will deal with, with motion number three. This will, this will have the retorts, the crematory retorts that, that we were confused about before, and this will be a vo, a borrowing vote, and it will take two-thirds for it to pass.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $300,000 as the general government capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below for crematory retorts, and to meet said appropriation, borrow the sum of $300,000 to be expended under the direction of the town manager, and appropriate the sum of $512,998 as the school capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below for Chromebooks with cases, and to meet said appropriation, borrow the sum of $512,998 to be expended under the direction of the school committee, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow such sums pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section Seven or Eight, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount of authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Second.
Finance committee voted seven zero to recommend. Public Works crematory, uh, cemetery, line 15, complete the rebuild of retort units A, B, C, and D, $300,000. Duxbury Schools, line 17, Chromebook with cases, $512,998. That's it.
Mrs. McNabb?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The crematory, um, seems like just yesterday that we rebuilt and redid this. So I'm concerned about borrowing money, uh, for this expenditure when it's a revenue generating, um, program. Could somebody speak to that, please?
I believe Mr. Butkus has an answer for you.
Hi, Peter Butkus, DPW Director. Believe it or not, the crematory is going on seven years old now. Um, we only get so many cremations out of the stonework that is inside the units. So what has to happen every six or seven years is all of that stone and the flooring has to come out and it has to be totally re-bricked. Um, it's the nature of the beast. It's, uh, it's part of the operation. It's, it's part of the operation.
Thank you, Mr. Buckus, but shouldn't the revenue generated by the use of the crematorium pay for this type of expenditure instead of having to borrow the money for it?
A decision above my pay grade.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, do you, I think this is your pay grade.
I don't know that I'm above his pay grade, but... The situation, why are we borrowing these? Obviously, these, the Chromebooks and the cemetery retorts, together, $800,000. These were two very important items that had to be addressed. We only had free cash, we typically have free cash for about a million dollars. Also, in looking over our policies for fiscal objectives, our, we only spend less than half of 1% on our budget on debt service items and capital through debt service. Our policies are to do that between 1% and, I think it's 1% and 3%. So, we don't spend as much out of debt service for capital items that we should. So, the thinking here was to take these two particular items and use one-year bands, pay them down in free cash if we have to, but over the course of three years, I want to wind up getting these into a capital budget rotation or into our debt service so that we do now have that increased capacity within our general fund for debt service and capital costs.
Thank you. I do hope we can get there. I continue to be super concerned about this type of borrowing of money and the way that we're spending like drunken sailors.
Please.
Mark McDevitt, Shellstown Street. I have a question on the Chromebook lease. Do we often treat leases as a capital expenditure? You know, is there precedent for it? And secondly, is this a one-year lease or is it a five-year lease? And lastly, you know, if the schools get their wishes, or, you know, parents do too for a Prop 2.5 override, I'm assuming this will become an operational expense, just like cars are an operational expense of our police department.
Mr. Adams, why don't you take a shot at answering all those questions?
The Chromebooks will not be the lease. They have leased their laptops in the past. Technically, according to the Department of Revenue, leases that are capital in nature should be voted as a 2/3 vote of town meeting. So, for purposes of trying to get these Chromebooks through as a debt service expenditure in the future, as I said, or capital expenditure in the future, these need to be treated as debt service. And so, these will not be a lease where we're committed to a certain amount each year. What I am trying to do over the next three years is to get these into our rotation for capital. By using one term, I'm going to borrow one year at a time and pay these off quickly. If I can use five-year note if I have to, or if the treasurer feels we have to, this way it gives us the flexibility, so we're not stuck with a particular debt service requirement. And we have had some sizable free cash to put into, put into these things as well.
Mrs. McNabb.
Final comment, a little off the wall, but at least the kids in the school and the Duxbury students are getting to use the computers here, whereas the crematorium. So, why don't, why don't we think a little bit outside of the box, and maybe if you're a Duxbury resident, you get a break on getting cremated at our town's facility, since we're paying for it.
Well, that's an interesting comment, but that's outside the scope of the article, so I think we'll move on. Are there any more questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote on Article 6, Motion 3. It takes a 2/3 vote. I think we're all clear on what we're voting on. Voting is open, one for yes, two for no. And the motion passes 165 to 45. Motion for, Mrs. Sullivan.
Mr. Moderator, it's almost 1:00. Did you want to, did you want to push through the rest of the Article 6 before lunch, or?
I was, I was, I was hoping that we might get through Article 6. I sensed that some people may have come here specifically for one of the votes in Article 6. Yes, that's what I thought.
Okay. Water Enterprise Fund Capital Budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $595,300 as the Water Enterprise Fund Capital Budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $595,300 from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
So, Water Enterprise Fund, Line 26, System Rehabilitation, $150,000. Pardon me? I'm sorry, was there a hold, or was?
Line?
There is no Line 25. The White Book, to which now I am committed, says Line 26. Oh, 20... Line 25 is under Motion 5?
Yes.
So, that is, that's a, that's a separate motion. I know, it's confusing, it's, but God knows, I haven't managed it very well so far. Line 27, Install Generators at Wells and Garage, $250,000. Line 28, Comprehensive Water System Master Plan, $195,300. Which one would you like me to repeat? 27?
Number 27, Mrs. Sullivan.
Install Generators at Wells and Garage. It says parentheses 8 and an asterisk. The asterisk means project request changed to purchase and install generator, singular, at Evergreen Well location, and includes design and engineering for all water wells. And that is $250,000. Okay? Is there a hold? Yes, hold?
I think there is a hold. I heard a hold from somebody.
Okay, okay. And that's, that's it?
That's it. So, let's deal with the hold.
Could someone remind us of how the decision was made to change from eight generators to one and the need for the, and talk about the need for the one?
We will get you an answer. And...
I'll defer to Fiscal Advisory.
So, Water Superintendent is on his way down, and Alex Chin from the Fiscal Advisory Committee will, I think, take the first shot at answering.
Alex Chin, Fiscal Advisory. I can take a shot at how we got to the $250,000, and I think Peter can talk about the actual, the generator site itself. The original request was for eight generators across water sites in town. Also, up here is Line 28, which is $195,000 for a comprehensive water study. We were concerned about what could potentially come out of that water study, that we might need to spend Water Enterprise Funds on, either retained earnings or borrowing. So, the greatest need in what we were told was the generator at the Evergreen Site. The estimates to replace that were a couple of years old, so we sort of inflated those numbers, modeled out, I shouldn't say inflated, modeled out those numbers to what the cost should be for the current year, and then there was an estimate on engineering for the other seven sites. So, that's how we arrived at the $250,000. You know, we expect, as we have talked about earlier, that we need, we still are going to need to deal with the other seven sites at another town meeting, but sort of wanted to understand what came out of the water master plan before doing so.
And Peter, if you'll, I guess, talk to the need itself.
So, the need under the $250,000, or the need in general, all encompassing?
Both would be great, if you don't mind.
Okay, so first, I'll deal with the modification, the $250,000 amount. That's going to deal with the replacement of a generator that currently exists, that's approaching 20 years of age. Simply, we just cannot do without that generator. It's, it controls the whole water system through SCADA system radios and computers, turns the wells on and off, tells us if something's wrong. It's just, in short, we can't do without that. The need for generators at most of the facilities is just, it's a redundancy thing. You know, we, a lot of the sites aren't able to have street gas provide, so they're propane, and we found that designed, usually designed to last a week of pumping, in reality, they only last about three days. So, we need more redundancy for backup power at our well sites. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Does this mean that we'll have...
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself again?
Joanne Kingsley, Lake Shore Drive.
Thank you.
Does this mean that we'll have less backups with the brown water when one system goes across town and we have a higher flow to lower flow issue by replacing this master plan? Because it's repeatedly a problem with the brown water and the substances in it.
So, you're speaking about the master plan, the request for the...
Yes, the master plan and all this cost to it is going to eliminate all the brown water and damage to our pipes and stuff as a result internally in our homes.
The master plan will create a roadmap for overall water quality improvement throughout the town, and resiliency and redundancy.
So, when you shut off a generator and then you turn it back on, you won't be kicking that brown water back as you have in the past?
You're talking about two different things, so I wish...
Well, it's all water, so...
Well, would you address the generators or the master plan?
Well, I think it's combined, because the generators are controlling the water, so when they turn back on, everything that's been there has sludge back into the homes, so that's why I'm questioning that.
I simply don't understand your question.
When you had a generator turned back on not too long ago, the water came back brown into the homes, and we were told, the explanation was, that it had been sitting there and that's what caused it. So, I'm just trying to be clarified on the amount of money that we're spending that we're correcting the problem that does exist.
The last time we had brown water in town was due to a water main break. It had nothing to do with the generator.
Because I went to your office, so, okay.
Actually, maybe I suggest that you could give, Peter, get in touch with him or his office on Monday when, when there's a little better time to speak and explain it.
I have gone there.
Oh, well, I... Okay. Any other questions, comments? I'm going to call for a vote on, on Motion 4. This is the Water Enterprise Fund Capital Budget. I think you know by now, it's one for yes, two for no. If you're in favor of the budget, press one. If you're opposed to it, press two. Voting is open. Motion passes 185 to 23. This is the final motion under Article 6. It is a bonding motion. It will require a 2/3 vote. Mrs. Sullivan.
Subject, Water Enterprise Fund Capital Budget, including borrowing. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,588,114 as the Water Enterprise Fund Capital Budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $338,114 from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and to borrow the sum of $2,250,000 for the PCE pipe replacement to be expended under the direction of the town manager, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow such sum pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Second.
Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend Water Enterprise Fund, Line 25, and again, I apologize for the, for the lines being out of sequence, PCE pipe replacement, $2,588,114. Hold, okay? That's it.
Please, if we could hear your question.
Joanne Kingsley, Lake Shore Drive. My question is, I want a clarification, that when this was voted on many, many years ago, what happened to the money for the pipe replacement then? I have no problems with this going forward. I'm just concerned that we keep paying for things over and over again. The money was allocated, and we're trying to figure out where it went to.
I think Mr. Reed has an answer for you.
For many years, the town had kept a resource of $50,000, $50,000, and we did that for many, many years, and then we would go out and save the money, and then do a little bit of pipe here, a little bit of pipe there. Not long after I got here, John Madden and I explored the idea of increasing that number from 50 to $150,000. So, what we would do is store up the money again, 150 here, 150 there, and then go do a larger section. John Adams arrives, he says, "Let's do it all." And I said, "Of course, why wouldn't we?" And the reason we wouldn't is because we can get the project done within two years instead of 19 and pay the same amount of money.
I understand that, but this was voted on a long time ago. What happened in that duration of time?
The pipes were replaced.
It seems like very little pipe was replaced.
The pipes were...
In what areas? Is it the whole town?
It began in 1997, if I'm understanding.
Then that's when it was allocated then, but it wasn't continued, and that's my concern. Where was the money that was voted on then for it?
It was allocated in smaller portions, that's what I'm saying. It was originally allocated in $50,000 chunks.
How much was actually done? I'm asking the question because we can't seem to get an accurate history of what was voted on, what was done. It seems to be very sporadic in where it was actually performed, the work.
Actually, through the meetings we've had with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, Peter Mackin has done a great job explaining what's been done and what hasn't been done, and I think there are remaining, eight roads remaining right now that need to be done, the longest of which is Harrison, and then there are smaller runs that are only about 1,000 feet, and we're going to conclude all of those over the course of the next two years.
So, has the inflation from the time that it took to do it, when it was first discussed as being replaced, to now cause this increase in the cost?
Not that I'm aware of, because we actually did the pipe replacements along the way. It's not like we've saved all the money over the course of almost 25 years to do it all at once. We've been doing it incrementally here and there, but now we're going to wrap it up and get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Richard Roden, Chairman of the Duxbury Board of Health, I'd like to address the group, if I might, for a few minutes.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon. I just wanted to just give a little context and some recent discussions at the Board of Health in support of this, this motion. As was mentioned earlier, in 1997, the Board of Health did recommend and support the removal of the pipes, or replacement of the pipes, excuse me, in a 4-1 vote, which was then voted on at Town Council in October, I mean, Town Meeting in October of 1997, and overwhelmingly approved. We've had some recent discussions from a concerned citizens' group to, to address the remaining pipes, and we just wanted to give some context and reiterate our support, and it's such, I'd just like to read a motion that was passed by the Board of Health on February 11th of 2019. It's from myself as Chairman of the Board to the Selectmen, and it says, "This is to advise that at the January 17, 2019, meeting of the Board of Health, it was voted 5 to 0 to support replacement of the vinyl-lined asbestos cement water mains in Duxbury. In order to protect the health of the citizens of Duxbury, the Board of Health recommends completion of the replacement of all known vinyl-lined asbestos cement pipes in an expeditious manner within the expected two-year timeframes." So, I just wanted to reiterate our support for moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote now? I'm sorry.
Vicki, do you want to go? Melissa Rosenblatt, West Street. I just wanted to thank the town for their support on this issue and for being willing to move ahead and finish the pipe replacement. That's something that very few other towns in the area have been willing to do, and this is a definite public health issue. The lining of these pipes has a carcinogen in there and Harrison Street, which is one of the longer pipes that are still in town, feeds into other streets, so it really does affect many, many people in town, and I'm just very happy that we're moving ahead with this and looking to finish this project. So I want to encourage everyone to, to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, let's try it again. I'm going to ask for a vote at this point in time. It's a two-thirds vote. Voting is open, one for yes, two for no. The voting has ended and the motion carries 214 to 12. That concludes the business of Article 6. I'm gonna, I'm going to suggest it's time for lunch. Before I ask for motion, I just want to say, if you're leaving and planning on coming, if you're leaving for the day, please drop your, your voting cards off at the, at the counter on the way out. If you're planning on coming back this afternoon, take them with you and bring them back. If you go home and find out it's sunny and warm and don't come back, please plan on dropping them off at Town Hall next week. Having said that, I'll accept a motion to recess this annual town meeting until 2:15 p.m. this day in this place. Will somebody make that motion? I heard a second. I think there's so many people moving, I'll take a voice vote on this. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.